Okay, it's 5:30, and if you will, we will begin and we'll open with a prayer. Just Councilmember Bolden.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Let us bow for a moment of prayer. Our heaven and father, we want to thank you for this day. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for your grace. Father, we ask you to bless our homes, our families, our friends, and we thank you for all of the citizens of this wonderful city of Nacogdoches. Father, we pray for and ask you to lift up our local leadership for your blessings. We pray that they would serve with need in you to address the needs of our community. May they engage with the citizens in positive participation in our community. May each one gladly contributes any way, whether humble or significant, and we ask you to bless as we meet tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, and gladly bless you with praise and honor. Amen.
I'll call this meeting to order, and if you'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda is open forum. Do we have anything? None? Okay. Nothing in open forum. So we'll move on to the regular agenda. City Council receives staff recommendations and public input on the following items and may deliberate and take formal action on the item. A, consider approval of a resolution to proceed with the issuance of certificates of obligation for the city of Nacogdoches for the funding of constructing, improving, and equipping firefighting facilities, including acquisition of land, and that would be City Manager Kanasars.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Mario Kanasar, City Manager.
Excuse me just a second. I'm sorry. I omitted, I failed to tell you that Councilmember Bellinger is joining us via Zoom, so she's present. We're all here and accounted for.
I was just notified that Councilmember Bellinger had a question. I don't know what it is. She had a question that she wanted to make known.
Sure. Yeah.
Sorry, I just wanted to let you know I'm here. Sorry. And what you did, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, great. Good. Thank you. I'm sorry that I omitted that. Okay, Councilmember.
Go do that.
City Manager Kanasars.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of council, folks in the community, obviously, we've got a large crowd here. The items that you have before you, they seem somewhat repetitive, and so we have those items individually listed for each of the projects for the certificates of obligation. I thought it was important just to kind of talk a little bit about the story and as far as where we, our journey through this process on the capital improvement plan. So I do have a series of slides. I also would like to say, too, that knowing that there's a lot of discussion in the community about the certificates of obligation, we have a button on our website, the very front page, literally says COs, and if you click on that button right at www.nactx.us, there's a button there, and it has, should have all the documents, including tonight's documents, on our website. So just want to let folks know in case you're interested in seeing the details of the information. So if you'll bear with me, I do have a series of slides that I'd like to show, and then ultimately, we'll get to the discussion on the COs. That way, you all can have that debate amongst yourselves and certainly hear from the community. So kind of give you some background. So when I first started here a couple of years ago, one of the very first charges, or one of the main charges that I was given by the city council to hire me, was to work on infrastructure. So literally, from my very first day, I've sat down with my staff, present staff and former staff that was here, I've met with people in the community, elected officials, upcoming elected officials, people all over, with business owners, business people, to basically say that we have issues with infrastructure. The city has not invested much in infrastructure. So literally, since day one, that's been one of my main focuses. And so soon thereafter, we've been working with staff. We knew that we needed to work on plans and come up with some information so that we can present to the elected officials. And so we literally started in earnest for the first time presenting fairly and quite detail our capital improvement plan. And so these are some slides that you'll see, and I want to kind of go through those in brief, certainly be happy to answer any questions, but go through these fairly quickly so kind of give context of where we are or where we've been. So this all started with our first series of workshops in November of 2021. We had four workshops over the course of the month of November. You can see on the screen, we've talked about the fire department first and airport. We spent a lot of time on utilities and utilities being water and wastewater. On the, towards the end of November, we talked about public works, streets, drainage, solid waste, and then we wrapped up on the 30th of November with parks, animal control, and other facilities. We identified approximately $175 million worth of capital needs. Now, keep in mind that we don't have every single item identified, that's nearly impossible, but no, the things that we did know, the things that we knew could be coming up and on the horizon over a five to six, seven-year period, these are the things that we identified. And again, I'm not going to go through those in detail. Those are available online, but I can kind of give you just a summary of those things. Obviously, when you are presented with such an enormous number, how do you even fathom that? So what council, and then we followed back up on December the 7th with the summarization. Our Finance Director Pam Kirby gave a summarization of everything that had been presented over the previous month. It was also mentioned at that meeting that we would have some debt rolling off in the general fund, and so that provided some funding options. And at the time, the council said, please come back to us at a later date and give us something that's more manageable, something that we can actually do, because $175 million is just too much to swallow. So how can you, can you come back with a series of priorities and then come back with the plan? So that's what we worked on for those few months. I just kind of gave you kind of a pie chart of that $175 million. What we have there listed is, again, these are things that we identified over the next five to seven years. $175 million start out with community facilities. That first one, that's community facilities, are the fire stations. Of course, one of those that we'll be discussing tonight, but those are those fire stations that've been up for discussion for quite some time. We've got parks improvement, improvements for downtown, city facilities, whether it's an animal control facility, city hall, recreation facilities, et cetera. Streets, fairly self-explanatory drainage, self-explanatory water, wastewater, landfill needs, historic sites. We are embarking on complete renovation of Zion Hill, so that was one of those small items, but still an item that needed to be addressed on the immediate needs. And our airport, airport continues to grow. We're very excited about the activity happening at our airport with the SFA Flight School plus the additional traffic. And we also recognize, too, that there may be some future development opportunities at the airport. So in total, $175 million plus of needs over the next number of years. So we fast forward to April 6th. So this is when we had our subsequent workshop with City Council, getting mentioned to you. We met in November and December. We fast forward three and a half or so months later, and here we are, April 6th, and the intent was to present all those findings with City Council, define some priorities, one, two, or three. I'll cover those here in a minute. The intent was to, we refined some cost estimates. We wanted to make sure that these items were presented in priority order, so that way we kind of maximize the time together with council. We certainly wanted to present any funding options that would be available to accomplish these projects, and then ultimately, again, consensus and direction on, do we proceed? Do we stop? Do we pivot and go a different direction? So really, the intent was to try to get some overall direction on how to move forward. So here are the priorities that were identified, tier one, two, and three. Tier one are things that are very immediate, things that are needed over the next one or two years. There's issues where there are failure may occur, there may be a liability issue because it may be some kind of, whether it's a code or some kind of an issue related to a regulatory issue, as mentioned there, or some safety issue. Tier two, something that can be done over the next five years, give or take, maybe not a current safety issue, but it's time to look at and analyze, but maybe not an immediate need that we need to address right now. And then tier three, it may not be a necessity, could be more of an enhancement, maybe an economic situation that may improve efficiency or effectiveness or enhance quality of life. But again, so those are kind of the three tiers in which we identified these projects. So as we refine the projects, here's how they broke down. So if you noticed before, we had $175 million, as we said, we refined the cost estimates, we refined the cost estimates to about $171 million, so we're trying to save you some money. And so we decide, we divided, divvied those up into these tiers. And so again, I can go back to, don't have to, but if you see them on the screen, again, going back, saying, being consistent, the community facilities being the fire stations, that includes not only the station that's up for consideration today, but also some land acquisition for the future fire stations, parks improvements downtown, city facilities, we pushed that to tier two, streets, drainage, water, and you can see about $105 million of tier one needs that need to be identified. And again, we also recognize, too, that $105 million is a lot to swallow even in and of itself, but again, it gave us at least a way to stratify these projects and try to come with some level of priority of what we can tackle. So we also talked about on April 6th, funding sources. So we have cash reserves in our general fund, we have cash reserves in all of our funds. We're required by our own policies to maintain a 25% fund balance. And so those fund balances are literally for emergencies. If we had a major catastrophe here in our community and every single, any income were to be turned off because of some issue, those are what those cash reserves are for. So we're talking about every excess cash reserve. So we have excess cash reserves in some, in many of those funds, and so that was one of the options to use. Certainly, user fees, we sell water, we sell sewer, we sell solid waste services, so we know that there is income, there's revenue coming in for those, through those efforts. There's certainly debt supported, or I'm sorry, there's debt through property tax supported, like is what we're talking about tonight, revenue-supported debt through the issuance, again, some bonded debt to, through the support of user fees being water and sewer, grants at various federal levels and federal stimulus. And so we know that we were fortunate because of our population, we received approximately $8 million in ARPA. ARPA stands for the American Rescue Plan Act that was conducted under the Biden administration in Nacogdoches because of its population, was allocated just at $8 million for that. And that was monies that can be used for water and sewer projects, and really, it had a wide variety of uses and allowances, and so, but one of those was crystal clear was for water and sewer purposes. And then the infrastructure bill that's been kicked around Congress, so again, it's still too early to tell whether or not we qualify for those things, but again, if we do, I think we should not go after those things. So I just wanted to kind of give a summarization of some of the, when we talked about the 100 and, what did I say, 100 and so many, excuse me, when I mentioned that before that in that first tier of $105 million, these are the areas that we thought actually we could, we could fund these projects by. We have, these are those categories that the projects could be split by. We identified about $43 million of things that we can do in this upcoming budget on the left side, and these are broken down by fund. On the right side, you see the revenue sources. So we've got cash reserves in all of our various funds of approximately $13 million that we can use above our required 25% allotment. We have $7.8 million in ARPA funds that we can dedicate to these projects, 1.3 million in grants, and I'll cover those in detail just here in just a moment, future user fees, and again, the CO issuance, the bonds, these are the discussions that we're having tonight. So I just wanted to show that overall, we've got projects split up in various funds, but we had also identified some funding sources as well. So going in a little bit more detail, and I split the, I put these on the same screen, but as I mentioned earlier, we are working with Zion Hill Baptist Church on its renovation, and so we have identified about $275 in needs there. We have the proceeds through our hotel, our hotel proceeds and revenues and some donations potentially, and so on April 6th, the council directed us to proceed with those projects. And again, not to proceed and actually spending the monies, but at least proceed with the process. And when you see proceed, it means proceed with the process. Doesn't mean that we have spent the money, it's just proceeding with the process. Sanitation, we see that, we recognize that because of growth and the fact that people are still throwing trash away, we need to have, we need to add more cells, meaning more capacity to our landfill. And so we do this periodically every few years, and so we're at a point now that it's time to start going through that process again. And so Steve Bartlett and his team identified about $3.5 million for that new cell expansion or new cell, the creation of a new cell at the landfill, and that's about $3.5 million, and also some permit amendments that we need to work through, about $3.5 million, and we have the cash on hand to do those. And again, on April 6th, the council indicated to proceed with that process. Airport, as I'd mentioned, we are doing very well at the airport. We are looking at doing some airport runway improvements, and so we're fortunate as part of that, being a general aviation airport, that we have support through Tech dot Aviation. And so we were able to set aside $150,000 of a city portion to receive a 90% portion or 1.3 million dollars worth of grant dollars from Tech dot Aviation. So again, it seems like a good investment for a 90-10 split. It's always good to use other people's money to try to fund some of the things, especially other levels of government to do that, and so that's what these are for through Tech dot Aviation. They support a variety of many general aviation airports, and we're one of those. And so we wanted to proceed with that, and council directed us to proceed with that. That second item or that tier two, that 14-5, that is actually new construction, and so again, we have no funding sources identified. There's been very high-level conversations about the potential of obtaining some additional grant funds through Tech dot Aviation, maybe some additional private investment, and again, long-term, maybe there may be some debt, but again, that's way down the road, and again, a lot of things need to happen to see whether or not that comes to fruition. On capital projects, this is a street maintenance fund, so we set aside approximately $1 million every year on street maintenance. So in everyone's water bill, there is a fee that's used that's set aside for a street maintenance fee. We collect, believe what, 750,000, so a quarter of a million dollars every year, and so this is sort of a five-year look forward of what would be collected over the five-year period, so 3.75 million, and then by ordinance, the general fund sets aside 250,000 for a total of $1 million on an annual basis. And so again, a lot of this is done through the budget process, and so you know, this is just a normal course of annual budgets that we do, and so again, as council, as mentioned before, council directed us to proceed with this. Then it comes to utility fund. This is our water and sewer. This is a big number, and so here, that evening, we identified about $77 million worth of We recognize that we established that we can fund about 27.5 million of that, and then we've got some other tiers, tier ones, that we know we need to do, but we just don't have the means to do that at this point, and so it would require some additional debt service on that, $9.5 million for some major water line repairs and...
(noise)
Major line, yeah, great timing. Major line repairs and also our pump station, transmission line replacement, I mean, it's not inexpensive, just shy of $10 million, so we know that we needed to do that, but don't have the funds right now in this current budget to do so. We also have the Lanana and Bonita Creek sewer trunk lines. That's a huge undertaking. It's well over $26 million. We don't have the funds to do that because of the amount of money that it requires, so again, that's just one of those difficult projects to do. What we do have is we do have on hand, we have $5 million of cash that's in a budget right now and that's been funded from previous year's budgets for the surveying, design, and right-of-way acquisition for this trunk line. This is, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a multi-year design, this is a multi-year design, well, this is a multi-year process to do the designing, certainly the surveying and the right-of-way acquisition. It's not something that's going to be done quickly, and so we recognize that we're not ready to fund this project yet, not that it's not needed, but we're not ready to fund the construction of this project because we're really focusing on, as I said, the surveying, the designing, and the right-of-way acquisition for these projects. So we've got the monies on hand to do that, and we're basically ready to proceed in the time on those efforts. So then kind of, so that was the utility fund, and I'm still on utility fund, but I just kind of want to give you kind of that breakdown of the, of what we can fund. Of the 27.5 million, here's the breakdown between water and sewer. So we have 15, almost 16 million dollars worth of water projects. As you can see, we've got almost $9 million worth of water line replacements. Two of those, out of the 8.75 million, 2 million of that is utilization of the ARPA monies. As I mentioned, we were fortunate that we received approximately $8 million of funds, and so we can dedicate money directly to these types of projects that qualify, and so we want to dedicate 2 million of this. We also have water line developer reimbursement, so as we work with the development community and they extend to our water system, those reimbursements, so again, it adds to that water system, make those improvements. There's a rehab that we do at various water wells, and so we set the monies aside every year, and so this is sort of a five-year look forward of 1.2 million that we would set aside for these improvements. And then we're also looking at replacing our automatic meter reading system. It was implemented a decade and a half ago or so, and so it is time to look at that replacement, and again, it would be a replacement, so we set aside about $4.7 million. And so we have cash on hand to do these projects, we're using cash reserves, we're using user fees, again, we've charged for water, so we know that we're going to have water customers that we're paying, and so we set those monies aside for these projects, and then we're also using federal stimulus. And so again, on April 6th, we received the go-ahead to at least proceed with the process, and these are the projects that have been embedded in your budget process that we've been discussing this summer. On the sewer side, we identified $11.6 million, and again, I can just quickly read through that, 5.8 of the, of the 7.8 is utilized directly to ARPA, so those monies are either on hand or will be on hand here shortly because they were divided up into two tranches. We are looking at doing some replace, some additional replacements and of other sewer lines, and again, sewer line development reimbursement, similar to what I mentioned on the water side, we work when they attach to the sewer system, these reimbursements, and so in total, 11.6, and then the belt press building that's needed to move material once it's extracted through the water treatment process and then disposed of. So all, in all, 11.6 million dollars. As I mentioned before, we have cash to do that, we're using user fees, again, we sell sewage services as part of the water bill and federal stimulus from ARPA. And so on April 6th, council asked us to proceed, and again, this has been part of the budget process that we've been discussing all summer. This is just a breakdown, just graphically, of the projects, so we've got 42% in sewer, 58% in water, and then just a breakdown of the funding sources. Cash reserves, 30%, ARPA, 28%, again, when you combine those, that's cash that we have on hand or will have on hand, and then future user fees over the course of the next few years. Then the general fund, that's another biggie. So the general fund, we identified about $70 million worth of needs over the long term. We identified of what we could fund was 17.3 million, and then tier two, $5 million. And so the thought here is that we could use cash reserves. We could also, again, part of the reason why we're here tonight, is to propose a CO, a certificate of obligation to replace expiring debt. Certainly, moving forward beyond that would require some kind of a bond program or some other funding initiative to be able to do that, and then we're also looking at potentially a study to potentially have a user fee that we can have ongoing maintenance and repairs for drainage, and certainly being aggressive on chasing grants that may be available to us as a municipality. Here's the breakdown of what we were anticipating as part of the budget cycle this year in using of cash funds. You see 1.6 million drawing down on, for using our excess reserves to do these projects. As you noticed, 650,000 for fire station land acquisition, that was included in our presentation on April 6th, but just going through the budget process, we felt that it may not be appropriate to do that in this year's budget because we had other needs at the time that maybe got ahead of that, and so the decision was to potentially incorporate that in the following year's budget, so that's why you see that in red. But everything else you see, we're looking at doing some electrical service upgrades at Festival Park, doing some improvements at Lake NAC, walkway improvements that are needed. We'd mentioned before that there are some renovations that are needed at some of our fire stations, regardless whether or not new stations are built, we are, we spend very little or budget very little in maintenance in our fire stations, so we're at a point now that we need to do some major improvements, at least for the time being, to at least buy us some time on those facilities. Our annual street rehab, I didn't mention and I apologize, but, well, I didn't mention actually that the city sets aside $250,000 on an annual basis for, for street rehab with that $750,000 that's gained through that fee, that's that match, and so I just wanted to show it to you, that's embedded in the budget. That other 150 for the airport grant match that we were getting through Tech Stop. And then we also have a situation over at Pioneer Park, we have a bridge that is in poor shape that really needs to be repaired immediately, and so working with our, with our Parks Director, we identified these monies to be able to do these projects. So while we're here, these are the projects that were identified for the CO. We know that we can't fund everything, we've got other needs, other, you know, these priorities that can't be fully funded, but we identified a number of projects that we felt needed attention, and again, I'll be honest with you, we, this number here, this 19.8 million, this is just debt that's rolling off. One of the charges that we had heard from council was find a way to be able to do a, if debt's expiring, what are the things that we can do with the expiration of that debt? How far can it go? And so these are the projects that we identified as a means to get started. Again, we know that we're not going to accomplish everything, but it gets us started. Central fire station, which is the big, obviously, point of contention in the community, of about $8 million. Parks restrooms, we have a number of our parks that are dire need of parks restrooms, our playgrounds of about half a million dollars, we've got some old playgrounds that need replacement, excuse me, we've got storm sewer repairs and reconstruction, again, storm sewer being drainage, when we have some of these massive rains, we have issues where we're either under capacity or no capacity, and so we identified a number of projects that we can, we can get started and make some headway, and then try to double our output when it comes to street reconstruction. Right now, we set aside about $5 million over a five-year period. We would like to be able to double that over that same period, at least in a shorter period of time, and do about $10 million, and so this is why we had decided to set aside these for streets. At the time on April 6th, we talked a little bit about certificates of obligation, and the consensus was to at least pursue the process. Again, we haven't spent any money on these things, it's just to pursue the process, and we provided a calendar that coming later in the summer, which was about this timeframe, that we would be coming back to council to initiate the proceedings to begin the formal process of issuing the COs, which is the certificates of obligation. At the time on July the 19th, council took action to initiate the legal proceedings, which we're in the process of now, and it was voted 3-2 to proceed, and that's where we are. As I'd mentioned, this is expiring debt, as you can see, make sure, as you can see on the screen, it was predicted at the time about .8 cents would be basically the fees in our debt service rate, or I'm sorry, that's a current rate. At the time, our new values because of reappraisals and new values that we have in our city, this would be the new tax rate if we basically stayed the course. If this, these projects went away, it would be how much, man?
.10, .0108.
So a little over one penny would be left on the debt service rate if these projects weren't funded. Okay. So again, you've seen this slide, we identified about $43 million that we could fund in this year's budget for these, in these areas. In these funds, we've identified where the monies would come from, again, if the COs were to pass, and so about $43 million. Again, I have two years of experience, but in speaking with my staff that has been here a long time, you know, this is the most ever, that the... a long time, you know, this is the most ever that the city has taken on to try to address some of our infrastructure needs. You know, in summary, as I mentioned, we identified one hundred and seventy-one million of things that we could understand that we did know. There may be a lot of things that we don't know, but the things that we do know, we identified about one hundred and seventy-one million dollars of just infrastructure needs. We worked through the process with council from the beginning of November into December into April sixth, and then through the budget process. So, we're setting aside, again, identifying forty-three million dollars in this upcoming budget year, which would start October first, and then September thirtieth of next year. So, forty-three million of the one seventy-five, excuse me, one seventy-one is about twenty-five percent, at least starts to address some of those things. We know that many of these projects can be funded by cash, they can be funded through stimulus dollars that have already been allocated to Nacogdoches, through grants that have already been allocated or will be allocated in Nacogdoches, and certainly user fees I had mentioned earlier. To us to be able to address the forty-three, we're going to, we don't have the full funds, we would have to initiate that. Certainly, we can look at additional cash reserves, but that gets critically close to our policy limits, and I would be concerned, and I would not recommend that. But we definitely believe that if we want to continue these projects, we're going to have to issue some debt, because of the enormity of what's at stake in the amount. Again, why, so critical right now, why the timing, is because we have debt expiring imminently, as mentioned before. And so, again, this is just another way to invest in infrastructure and not raise taxes. As I mentioned, the current timeline is important, because you're in the middle of your budget process. On September the thirteenth, you're going to be setting a tax rate based on your operation and maintenance and your debt service, and we literally need to know what is the debt service tax rate need to be. And so, each of these items are up for your considerations tonight. You know, I've really thought about my comments tonight. I've really thought about, you know, what is to be said, what could be said. I mean, there's a lot to be said, I'm sure, by the community. But I will tell you, as I mentioned, my number one priority when I was hired is to look at infrastructure. We believe that your staff is very capable, I have full faith and confidence of our staff. They're very experienced, they're very knowledgeable, they're very dedicated to this community. They have put their heart and soul in these projects and try to identify not only the funding sources, but try to get good numbers. And again, there's a lot of things that we don't know, but trying to get to a good place where we believe it can be managed, it can be done, and we can be successful. You know, I stand behind these projects fully. We've been working way too hard, and so I fully stand with these projects, and again, I hope that council considers those moving forward. That being said, I will say that I had been in contact with a couple of council members over the last few couple of days, and they mentioned that there is, and I know that there's a lot of contention in the community, whether the COs or the process or the projects or the procedures or the funding, and I get it, and again, I don't know all the issues, because everyone certainly has their opinions and their right to have their concerns. But I was approached by a couple of council members that said, there is a way to hopefully defees, or at least diffuse, some of the tension in the community, and that is to the removal of the fire station, and that that may stop the petition. Again, it's, we know that's happening in the community. I said that I would certainly think about that. I still stand behind these projects, but I also indicated that I would reach out to the petitioner. So, I did reach out to Mr. Blackburn, met with him for just a few minutes today. He was taking a tour of the fire stations. He visited with Chief Kiplinger yesterday, and he visited with Chief again today to do a tour of the facilities. And I just asked him, you know, what is, you know, just asked him if, in essence, you know, there's four projects that are being considered for the COs, literally just if the CO for, excuse me, if the project for the fire station was removed, would the petition go away? And he said it would. So, again, I say that just to let you know the facts, and just full disclosure that I had those conversations, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Still doesn't sway my recommendation and where we've been, but I just wanted to make sure you all were aware. And with that, I'll be quiet and turn it over back to the mayor.
Thank you for the overview, Mr. Kanzers, we appreciate that. Just to remind you kind of the order of things, four A is the fire facilities, and then B, the parks, and then drainage and streets, kind of beyond that. But I think it might be appropriate this time for fire to speak to us about the need.
Mayor, do you have specific questions, or do you just want to?
I guess council, do you have, do you have any questions for Mr. Kiplinger? We've certainly talked to him several times.
Chief, we've discussed the desperate needs that your department has at length. Can you just give us an overview of the needs that the fire department has from a space utilization standpoint, safety issues? Can you just walk us through that just briefly for the audience?
Absolutely. So, the first and largest concern that I have is the fact that today, we have three engine companies across town with two people working on them. That's unsafe, it's not effective or efficient, they can't do anything when they get to anything bigger than a car fire. There's nothing that they can do with two people. So my first concern is how do we always ride at least three people across on every piece of fire after accident? The reason that we came up with the proposal and asked for the study to be done from the engineer was to see if we could reduce the number of stations from five to four, so that on a day that we had the minimum number of staff, which is twelve plus a battalion chief, that we would always have three people on an engine. And could we do that without adversely affecting our insurance rate? And could we do that without adversely reflecting, adversely affecting the way that we provide services? And the engineer said that we could. The recommendation is that we always have at least three on every engine, and that we staff the ladder truck every day with three people. Currently, we have three people at two stations and two people at the other three stations, and the ladder truck is staffed by the engine company, they just jump from one truck to another. So, optimally, by going to four stations, we kind of create a stopgap by creating a safer environment for our employees. And it buys us some time to be able to add the additional staff, to add an additional twelve people, which is really what would be required to be three across every single day, would cost around a million dollars a year in operating budget. And we all know that the operating budget just can't fund that. Additionally, at our stations, we haven't done the things that other places have done with regard to employee health and safety, with regard to cancer prevention initiatives, with regard to the facilities being designed in a way where you have a hot warm and cold zone, so that the hot zone is where everything that causes cancer lives, and the warm zone is where all the decontamination happens, and the cold zone is where the firefighters operate and do their normal practices. And we've never done anything to effectively address that. We've put some Band-Aids on around town. The last thing is that we have a fire station that has one bathroom with one toilet and one shower that are next to one another, and that's not an acceptable way for my employees to live their lives. It's not okay. And I will stand here as a citizen in Nacogdoches or as your fire chief and tell you that any of those things are okay. I just can't do it. It's not okay, it's not appropriate, we shouldn't treat our employees in that manner. I worked at that fire station back in the nineties. It was uncomfortable when two people were at the station. It was more uncomfortable when three people were there, and I can only imagine if it were two men and a woman firefighter, just how uncomfortable it would truly be. So, I'll be happy to answer any more questions.
I just want to say thank you for answering those and sharing those details. I know you and I have gone in depth with that, and my support for the firefighters and for your department. I can't respect you more, and I appreciate what you do and what everyone in the department does.
Councilmember Fisher?
No, go ahead.
Mr. Bolden?
Sure. Chief, as you know, I support the funding of a new fire station. You know, we praise our first responders for the outstanding service they do, and now we want to ignore the unhealthy and unsafe conditions that is allowing to take place in this old building. It's starting most important on the health and safety of all our first responders, as well as their ability to efficiently respond to emergencies in our town. And then, just one in the distance, we want to show our gratitude for a job well done, but I support keeping the fire station on the CO. Thank you.
I appreciate that, and we went and had a study done by an engineer that knows a lot more than I do about making sure that we could balance our actual response with the best coverage we could provide to maintain our excellent insurance rating. And it's a big number. It's a big number to move those stations and build a fire training facility. It's a twenty million dollar total number, and this is the first bite of that apple of a long-range plan. The long-range plan also has to include hiring more people. We frankly just don't have enough. With twelve firefighters on duty tonight, there's nothing they can do. We ask our firefighters to risk a little to save a little, to risk a lot to save a lot, and to risk their lives to save a life. But we can't ask them to do that over and over and over, when we know that twelve people's not enough, and that two people on a fire engine on the southwest side of town are out there by themselves.
Ms. Fisher?
I've got, is that okay? I've got a couple. Hold on. There you go. I've got a couple things for you. I was rereading the fire station location study that you just mentioned, and it makes, I mean, it's really, I think it's really well done. It's comprehensive, and it lays things out very clearly. And one of the things that I would like for you to expand upon a little bit is, and it's on page nine, but I'll just tell you what it is. It basically says, we have an insurance rating, an ISO rating of two currently, but that's actually based on a few things that were, on a few mistakes, basically, that that rating actually probably, that we have an ISO rating of two, but we're not deserving of it.
Or we're right on the edge.
Right, right. And so, if these critical changes aren't made, that we risk dropping our rating to a three, right? And it talks on page nine about the effect, financial, the financial effect of regressing from an ISO rating of two to three. It says, da-da-da-da-da, two percent, eight percent, anyway, what I'm thinking is it's talking about the effect on our insurance premiums. And so, I wanted to ask you if you could explain a little bit on that.
So shortly after I got here, we went through the review process for the first time for ISO. We spent about three years getting ready for that review and invited them in, and we were able to, we were able to enhance our level from a three to a two. The personal effect it had on my house off of Millard Street was I saved a hundred dollars a year on my homeowner's insurance when we went from a three to a two. Going from a two to a three would likely have a similar effect. Now, every insurance company handles insurance services office, fire protection rating data differently. State Farm doesn't handle it the same way that possibly Prudential would handle it. But they all use that data somewhere in their calculation. They're all buying that data from the nonprofit insurance services office that creates that rating. And so, what the Texas Department of Insurance has done is created a chart, and it kind of creates the averages of kind of what you could expect if you go, if you regress or you progress within those ratings on a commercial policy or on a homeowner's policy. The bulk of your homeowner's insurance policy is related to fire and major catastrophe, the things that the fire department responds to.
Okay. And so, not taking steps to adopt these changes then will have an effect on people's bottom lines in terms of home insurance payments, is what you're saying?
I think the real issue is having a plan that we can accomplish in a reasonable period of time to address the station, the facility issues, which it does require moving three facilities to go through this plan, but also taking steps to hire the staff, staff necessary to take care of us when we're asleep at night.
Right. And then, one more thing, you know, when we had a meeting in this room two months ago, less than two months ago, our police, our interim police chief came and told us that the police department is in a hiring crisis. City council responded quickly, five to zero, with zero public opposition that I heard of, to respond to that crisis. What we've been hearing from our fire department is that you guys are also in crisis. It's not a hiring crisis, but it's a station crisis. It's a crisis regarding the health, safety, and well-being of our firefighters. And I see a few of them here tonight, some in uniform, I don't know of others. And I was just wondering, you discuss the living conditions of our firefighters, and I was wondering if any of them wouldn't mind coming and speaking to that directly.
Chief Kiplinger has mentioned the living conditions that you guys are in, in the fire stations, and whereas, you know, people go to work and then go home and sleep at night, you guys stay there. It's your home away from home. And so, my question was if you could speak to the living conditions in the fire stations for you guys.
Okay. So, we can start at Station Two, which you talked about on East Main. So, the first major issue is that when it rains, the sewer backs up into the shower. Station Four, the roof has been leaking on the electrical panel for years. Station One, the wall, we've talked about it numerous times over the last few meetings. Station Five, the downtown station, three years ago, I had a company come out of Beaumont and give us a price quote to seal coat the bricks, because every time it rains, it leaks in and the plaster busts off the wall. That happens to be the station where our museum is, so we get the most visitors. Station Three, on the south loop, the air conditioning unit continues to go out, and the last time we had it serviced, the AC man said that this is the last time that it could be fixed. So we got a price quote on that, it was twenty thousand dollars to replace the units on that. The cancer mitigation, we did it. We had to build those rooms. We had to build them ourselves, because we had no help. That's just a few. That's one at every station. So, y'all been, you've been around. I don't know what the big issue is. So we're in a situation where we could take eight million dollars on a CO and build a station to help the manpower issue, provide a service into downtown, provide a service to the southeast ward, or we can hire a minimum of nine people at roughly a hundred thousand dollars with training and gear and benefits and all that for a twenty-year career, which is about eighteen million dollars. So, the CO doesn't change our tax rate, because we're paying it off at the end of this month, is that right? At the end of this month, it's paid off, and we're just wanting to re-up it. So, I really don't know what the issue is with all of y'all that don't want this. Go to the fire station. Go talk to them. So that's all I got to say, I hope that something's done about it, because eventually, they're going to get tired of it. And when they leave, next year, half of them are eligible for retirement. What are we going to do then?
Councilmember Fisher?
Do we have somebody else coming up? Yes, please.
I kind of left out Councilmember Ballinger, but you're next.
I kind of left out Councilmember Bellinger, but you're next. Go ahead.
Not as tall as he is, so let me fix this. I really don't need it. Councilman, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Chuck French. I am the oldest working fire department employee right now, I can say that. Working on 30 years. And, Ms. Fisher, I believe the other day you mentioned it in a meeting, kicking the can down the road. And in my 30 years of working here at this department, that is what we've done, is kick the can down the road. It is time that we step up, we put money forth, and we make some changes to some of the buildings. Hey, I love the downtown fire department, believe me. My great uncles once started the historical renovation of the downtown, but it's time to move on. We've got, we've got to get some changes made. All right. So any questions that y'all may have?
We may call you back.
Good.
Okay. I wanted to finish our questions, then we will have public comment. Thank you.
Just a comment, that is a wholly, what we just heard, a wholly unacceptable way to treat people who put their lives at risk every single day for this community. And we have to do something about it.
Okay, Councilmember Bellinger, any questions?
Yeah, I do have a couple. I really appreciate all the, the work, the service that our firefighters give us. I'm glad we voted for a raise last week, last time we met, even though it wasn't on the budget. So my questions really have to do, there's some specific ones about costs. I know it was, that these figures were provided to us about the cost of rehabbing the downtown station and the East Main station. Can you, Chief Kiplinger, can you go over that? I know I saw 1.7 million to rehab the downtown and I believe 1 million to rehab the East Main, Street One. Could you explain that for me?
Yes, ma'am. Those were, those are actually, they're, were provided to you for all five fire stations. Those are the stopgap measures that we need to take if we're gonna stay in the stations for five to 10 more years. They were, involve life safety and deferred maintenance. It was things like roofs, bay doors, filtration systems to try to keep the dark diesel particulate and cancer-causing agents out of the living areas. Those were, again, those are all the life safety and deferred maintenance issues just to keep the buildings running for now. So I met with Mr. Blackburn today, we toured, I think we both coalesced around the idea of about four and a half or five million on the downtown station to, to fully renovate it, rehabilitate it, and make it another 50-year building, to keep it another 30, 40, 50 years. That number's closer to four and a half or five million. So again, these are, if we just need to, if we just say we can't afford this today, we need to put a million and a half or a million seven into the downtown station just to keep it operating in a safe and effective manner. And Station Two is the same, virtually the same thing.
Yeah. Or spend the 45 million to really redo the downtown, did I just?
And still have a station with, the engine room can't be any bigger than it is. I mean, it's, it's always gonna be the size that it is. And we're stuck with that. In 1952, it was, it was probably a little bit small and in 2022, it's extremely small.
Thanks. Is there a way that we could keep our ISO two rating without spending $8 million? That's just a question somebody asked me and I thought I'd...
So, so is there, is there a way, yes, my, my expectations, it would take 21 full-time employees to keep us, a plan to get to 21 additional full-time employees over time. Again, we need to staff that ladder truck. So, so the difference is, the delta is, instead of 12 full-time employees, we would probably need to go somewhere closer to 21 in order to be able to staff seven pieces of apparatus every day, sorry, six pieces of apparatus every day. And so if we go from five stations to four, we reduce the number of fire trucks that we need to four engines and one ladder truck. If we stay at five, it's five engines and one ladder truck. So there's some unrealized cost savings as well by going to four stations because our vehicle replacement schedule doesn't have to be as aggressive because instead of trying to maintain six or seven engines so that we can keep five on the road every day, now we can reduce that, that number to five or six. So it's, so our equipment replacement schedule would, would actually moderate a little bit because we'd have one less fire truck we needed.
Thank you. That's all real helpful. I have just a couple more questions on staffing. And if you all will pardon me, I'm sorry, the reason I'm remote is because I have COVID. So it's not that I don't want to be with you all, so I thought I'd share that. Not my COVID, but my explanation. I was asked that, you know, we're a very small city and we have a whole lot of needs and, sorry, and we have a whole lot of needs and limited resources. I was asked if there's any way to augment our fire department with a volunteer fire department. That's just, I had no idea I'd ask you that.
That's a fantastic idea. The challenge is that the 15 volunteer fire departments in Agadotus County are dramatically understaffed. Many of them don't respond to calls during the day because they don't have any volunteers. And so our volunteer pool in this entire 950-square-mile county is very limited. We have looked at the idea of augmenting with volunteers. There are a lot of challenges inherent with that with regard to training and staffing and equipping those folks, but the reality is there just aren't a lot of people out there wanting to volunteer.
Okay, so following up on the staffing question, how many more staff do we need under this, you know, right now? How many more firefighters do we need? And then, I'm getting confused in how many firefighters we need now versus how many we would need if we reduced the fire stations to four and replaced all these fire stations down the line for a total of, what is it, 20 million or, anyway, how many firefighters do we need in all the areas?
Today, there are 18 firefighters on a shift, 17 of them are firefighters, one is the shift commander for the entire town. That's the maximum. That's how many people we actually have employed to work there. Our minimum staffing is 12 plus one. And the challenge is when you divide 12 by five, you end up with three stations that have only two people at them. And so again, our number one goal is to create three people as an absolute minimum on every fire engine that rolls out. Our long-range goal needs to do three firefighters on every engine plus three on the ladder truck. So you can do the math however you want to do it. Now, the challenge is that we offer vacation and people get sick and, and so on a day like today, people are off. And so we're not at maximum staffing, we're at minimum staffing. And that, that happens more often than not between vacations and holidays and sick leave and, and all the other things that, that training and all the other things that happen. So, so there are many, many days that we, we hire back overtime. There are many, many days that we do mandatory overtime where after working a 24-hour shift, our employees are told they can't leave the station, they have to stay for another 24 hours. And so that happens. So, so in order to account for that, if we want to stay at five stations and accomplish three across staffing just on the engines, because of leave time and all that, we really need to hire 12 full-time employees at a cost of about $85,000 a year each, which includes equipment, training, salary, benefits, the whole package. And so that number is somewhere close to a million dollars a year in our operating budget. That just ensures that every time a fire truck rolls or a fire engine rolls, that there are three people on it, which is the absolute bare minimum. By going to four stations, when you divide four, divide 12 by four, we're able to accomplish three across staffing on a minimum staffing day on those four trucks. And when they actually get to the burning building, they can do something. And they can do it safely and they can, they have at least the minimum amount of tools that they need. It doesn't, it doesn't, that's not the end-all-be-all. Again, we still need to plan to staff that ladder truck over time.
So just to see if I understand this, we would need 12 more with the fire stations we have and no more if we went to four? Is that what you're...
To be able on a minimum staffing day to always have 12 people on duty, which is three per engine. We still don't have staffing for the ladder truck on a minimum duty day. It's just three per engine.
Okay. 12. One thing that I was asked is why can't somebody from another fire station meet the fire truck? Partially because fires are our fewest number of calls, I understand. Mostly their health and car wrecks and things like that. Can another person go meet them? This is something I don't know.
I don't have any idea what that means. I'm sorry. Can you explain?
I think what the question was is if people, if, if somebody from one station goes to a fire, can somebody from another station meet them there and then you'd have your three contingencies?
I think there's a big misconception. When we have a building fire, all five stations go every time. So we empty every fire station on every building fire. When you have a car wreck on North Street that involves anything serious, two stations go to that every single time. Today, because we're, we have three stations with two firefighters at them, if there's a very minor car fire, two fire stations are gonna respond. So we're gonna send two engines because two people isn't enough to put out a car fire in the hood of a car. So, so I think there's a real misconception there, but, but if there's a storage shed on fire with only 12 people on duty, we have to have all five engines go. That's, that's how that works on the first alarm. And there's, you watch the, watch the TV news and they say something went to a second alarm or a third alarm. There's one alarm and then we call the volunteers in the county to come help us and we call Lufkin. And 45 minutes later, an engine and a truck with a couple of people show up from Lufkin to help us. But, but there, there's no, yeah, there's no time that we don't all go.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. I have another question. Okay, I want to get into public comment, we can, if it's something...
Yeah, I mean, it's directly related to this. When you're saying you send multiple engines, and I completely agree with that. So I went to a neighborhood watch meeting last night for the Arbor Oaks and the station that is closest to them has two people at it. So how much longer with construction does it take to get to the Arbor Oaks from that station right now?
We, our estimate is 90 to 120 seconds longer than it was before the construction started.
And how long does it take to get from station? Would it be Station Five? Who would respond, who would be the second one to get there?
Either Station Two in MLK in Maine or Station Five. It's a roll of the dice which one gets there.
And when that happens and there are two guys and there's a structure fire in the Arbor Oaks, in all likelihood, they're not gonna get there in time. I mean...
I mean, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's, let's move to public questions and public comment. And if you'll come to the microphone and state your name, please, and then speak in the microphone so we'll, we can, everybody can hear.
My name's Iry Montes. I'm just trying to get the math down. Is there two state, two fire engines at every station or one or two?
So...
You have an engine and then you have a ladder truck?
So because of our staffing levels, each station has multiple fire, pieces of fire apparatus for different jobs. So at Fire Station Two, Three, and Four, we have a regular fire engine and a wildland fire engine that goes to grass fires and woods fires because we can't, it's a different, it's a different tool. At Fire Station One on North Street, they have an engine and a ladder truck. And at the downtown station, they have an engine and a rescue truck. And the same crew, depending on the type of call, gets on the appropriate truck. So we cross staff apparatus.
So you cross staff the people on it. So if you've got, do you have any that have just a fire truck and a ladder truck?
So Station One on North Street has... Mr. Montes, to keep this kind of straight, can you ask your question and then be seated and let him answer and then, and then we'll get someone, let someone else have a time? Because I think there'll be several of us that want to ask questions. So, yeah, we, we have one aerial device and it's currently located at Fire Station One on North Street. The plan, if the central fire station is approved, is to relocate that aerial device closer to downtown. Every fire that we have in a downtown building requires an overhead support. It also being on University Drive allows us much better access to the university and to the industry we have on the South Loop. Our absolute number one industry that we respond to with regard to fire is, is our plywood plant. But the nature of what they do requires that a ladder truck or an aerial device be there. So the plan would be to relocate somewhere in the close vicinity of Maine and University. And we, that station would house an engine and a ladder truck and a rescue truck. And on days that we were fully staffed, on the day that we had, all 18 people came to work, we would staff the ladder truck and they would cross staff the rescue truck and we would staff a fire engine at that station. So, and on days when we were on minimum staffing, there would be three people there and they would all go together, they would all... That is awesome. They would all, they would all go together. So, so yes, so when you talk about Station One, we, we have lots of, we have lots of tools and they all do different things. And so we have to be able to have all of those tools in order to, to, to keep the community safe and to do the best we can. So, thank you. Any other, yes, sir.
My name's Rodney Ray. Chief, would you explain two in, two out for one? And explain, you said you mentioned two or three times about the cancer causing inside your facilities. Something nobody's thinking about is exhaust.
Speak, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Speak to that microphone, please.
Chief, would you explain two in, two out? And you've mentioned two or three times today and so have your firemen about cancer causes and, and exhaust. Would you explain the exhaust problem you have inside your houses?
Thank you. Absolutely, thank you. So, so state law requires that we follow the career fire departments, paid fire departments follow what's called the two-in-two-out rule. That means that for every two firefighters that are inside a burning building, we have to have two firefighters that are outside prepared to go in and rescue them. Firefighting is an inherently dangerous, horribly dangerous job. And so that's an absolute firm rule. The only time that that rule doesn't apply is you can send two people in if they have a known victim. So if they pull up and somebody's yelling on the second floor, as long as we have two people, they can go in there and try to effect a rescue. But if we don't have a known victim, until there are a minimum of five firefighters on scene, a driver to operate the truck, to engineer the truck, and two firefighters to go in and two to be on the outside, we can't legally go in the burning building. With regard to cancer, cancer is the leading cause of death among firefighters. Everything that we touch, everything that we breathe, every call that we go to involves something that we have these repeated exposures over and over and over again. If it's a car fire, a house fire, you know, we wear breathing apparatus and that protects us, but it gets on our skin, it gets on our gear. We do the best we can to keep things clean. We go to a car fire and we wear our breathing apparatus, but, but at the end of the day, we still have to pull ceiling and tear into walls after the fire's out. And all of those things that cooked out of your carpet, out of your couches, out of your furniture, all of those things are still in the air. And then at the end of that, we load up our fire truck and we drive back to the fire station and we back a diesel fire engine into the building that we live in. And the diesel particulate exhaust and the benzene adversely affect our health. Testicular cancer is a leading, leading, firefighters lead the world in testicular cancer. And the reason is the way we operated for many years. We kept our pants shoved down around our boots and our boots on the floor in the engine room where that diesel exhaust just settled right in the middle of your pants. And so that has personally affected us. And when Chief Black was up here earlier and got emotional, it's because we've had a firefighter that was directly impacted by that with no heredity, no family history. We know where it came from. So that's anecdotal, but it's real. So two-in-two-out cancer, how do you fix the cancer? You either suck the diesel out or you put diesel filters on the trucks or you put a carbon filter on the ceiling to try to process the air very quickly. We've done none of those things. And there just frankly hasn't been the budget and it all comes out of operating funds and we've never had the money, but it's time to do something.
At minimum staffing, there's three stations have to show up for one fire, correct?
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Vicki Boatman and I have a question. It sounds like we've been in this predicament for quite some time. I would like to know how long we have been understaffed and why we've gotten to what appears to be a point of desperation before we're doing anything about it.
I think that's an excellent question. My understanding, and I was a sophomore in high school when this fire station at, out by the high school was open, and I was not at that high school, I was at a different one. But in 1984, they opened Fire Station Four. And my understanding is that they didn't hire any people and they didn't buy any trucks. They took the number we had to operate four stations and divided them by five. And that, with the understanding that over a period of... And that, with the understanding that over a period of time, we would hire employees to make that ride. Well, you don't open a fire station that needs 12 people and not hire any people. And so, this problem dates back all the way, again, I was 15 years old, so all I can tell you is what I understand from the people that came before me. But that's when we got in this predicament with regard to staffing. With regard to the stations, we have 70-year-old buildings that have never had any significant maintenance on them. You know, I lived in a, in a house that was built in 1971 and I had to put a lot of energy and love in it. These stations were built in 52 and 53. And beyond that, with regard to the master plan in general, when Fire Station 1 at North Street in Austin was built, that was the end of the pavement on North Street. It turned to dirt beyond that. That was in 1953. And so, over time, the city has grown, the city has changed, and we've not done anything except, as a community, we've just not done anything. Have there been requests for more personnel? Yes. Have there been requests for upgrades to facilities? Yes. I've been here almost 16 years as your fire chief and I've asked every year. And the answer is we just don't have time. So, does that answer your question spoken?
Anybody? Does that have to be a question, question, comment? Anybody? Yes, Mr.?
Yes, hi. I'm Ryan Head. I'm just going to give a quick comment. After listening to all these proceedings and the statements from the people in committee, I find not approving this fire station would be highly egregious and borderline unethical the way that these firefighters are treated. And so, I strongly and the most sincere way ask you to approve this fire station for the community and for these firemen and women. Thank you.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. Listening to Chief Kiplinger, every time I hear him speak, and I've been coming to city council meetings for a couple of years now, I learn something more. He knows so much about this business. We could think, we could ask him questions all day and he would tell us more and more stuff, but I don't need to ask him because I trust that with his knowledge, he's making the right decision for us. The other thing I want to say is I've been listening to Pam talk about the budget and I see all these PowerPoints and all this work that you guys do, trying to make the numbers work, trying to take care of all our needs and make it work for us. I see that you have this opportunity now with the CO and that you wanting to take advantage of this rare opportunity to invest in something that we have really been so negligent at. So, I trust the staff. Like Mr. Kanzera said, I think that they do a great job and I am proud of them and I'm happy to support all the work that you guys do.
Hold on, Ronnie. Go ahead. Beat you. That's all right. You're all good.
You can sit down, chief. I'm not going to ask you any questions, but I will comment. My name's Ted Smith. I'm a local insurance agent and I would like to expand more on the ISO. For those that you, that don't know, it's the International Standardization Organization. They set the rates for what your homeowner's insurance pays. So, as what they've elaborated on, we're currently at borderline two, almost three. If we go up to three, your insurance rates go up, I get more money and my kid gets a new car. No, just kidding. But your insurance rates go up. It has to do with your fire. But if we go down to a one, your insurance rates go down. So, the adverse effect of that is your reduction in insurance for your fire, your homeowners, will go down and more offset this tax increase. So, fiduciary alone more than covers the fire stations. And then everything that these guys said, just, it's a humanistic thing. You have to do it. So, that's what I had to say about that. One other thing, totally went blank on it, so I'm going to turn it over to Ronnie. Sorry.
Matthew Gallagher, I just want to also get up and make a comment on this is I think we're missing the humanistic element, just like you accounted for. We're in a workforce now that people don't really have to stay in their jobs. I mean, they have the opportunity to go other places. They can't work from home, so, but they have so many options that they don't have to work in the firefighting field risking their life, having families, doing any of that for any of us. They have options now that they don't have to keep doing the same thing if they don't feel like they're being taken care of. I mean, we have the option to improve their facilities, to make them have a better quality of life. They have to show up every day and come out and respond to our lives. They have families too. They're risking everything and the last thing we can do is go ahead and upgrade their facilities and support them. I mean, I think it's just, what would you want if you were in their position and you had to go out every night and risk your life and risk your family and do everything for someone else? So, keep that in mind and I support this. Appreciate it.
I'm Ron Collins, 1827 York Drive, and I do appreciate very much the opportunity to come and speak tonight. And I did do some preparation of this, so I'm going to kind of do a little read here. But, you know, I am here to encourage you to support the issuance of the $20 million Certificate of Obligation. I believe it's the right thing for us to do for our community for many reasons. Certain of them is what I'm going to talk about now. We've spent much time assessing and prioritizing the current recommendation of projects. Some of these will be funded from existing excess reserves while others will be funded from the CO proceeds. The CO funding project will include city park restrooms and playgrounds. Who can ever argue with that? Our city streets, we do need major improvements to those, upgrades throughout our city. Our drainage, significant rains now make it very unsafe to drive in areas until water, rising waters recede. Construction of a new city central fire station. We had a full assessment of this need by experts at least a year ago. The new central fire station was well-studied and reviewed. And if you follow the analysis, it makes total sense to combine these two existing stations to one. It is strategic and well-planned. I toured our two existing facilities that are looking to be combined. They are antiquated and worn. They are not strategically located. They result in spreading of our firefighters too thin to be effective in times of peak need and produce an unhealthy environment to those that work there. We have talked about personnel recruitment and retention of those in our city service areas. And I believe that these are not only dependent on salary, but they're also of the facilities provided for them to work in. Our new schools are an example of good work that was recently done. And I personally appreciate that work and it's nice to have facilities of good quality and appearance. We've been patching and living with antiquated and worn facilities for many years at the city. It's evident we need to update them and unfortunately, we are paying the price now for not having done more of this in the past. We need to catch up on some things and we can't, we cannot rely on just annual maintenance funding to do it. The things we are proposing come with no additional property tax increase and allow us to maintain more than adequate reserves. What a deal. I'm tired of having worn out things. I don't want to see us to continue to kick the can down the road. Unfortunately, I think waiting for all of us to agree on this may never happen. But there comes a time when we need to use the analysis we have, trust the review and recommendations of our experienced staff, and rely on your leadership and good judgment to say yes and move us forward with this plan. I want to thank you for your time.
I'm not sure about speaking with one of these too much. I'm Stephen Wright. Live over on Hyder Street. I've been blessed with the opportunity to be a couple of places where some bad stuff happened. I urge you guys to support the fire department fully. Matter of fact, I wish there was a little more going into it. Which one of you wants your house to be left out because you don't have enough staff? Which one of you want a city building to be left out because there's not enough staff? The cancer is serious. I've got two buddies that are going down right now from my team that I was on and we've lost three others. So, that kind of stuff needs to be addressed as well, the safety issues. These guys go out, they breathe that stuff accidentally and then they come home to the station and guess what? They're not away from it. So, we need fully support him. I urge you for, as a taxpayer. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to leave that part to you. I just, my name is Dustin Beavers. I want to thank you for allowing me the time to talk tonight. I want to echo the rest of the comments. I want to make sure, we're talking about our firefighters here. You know, I got a five-year-old little girl and those guys in the back, I get mad at them sometimes because every time she has learned that if we stop by a fire station, they'll turn the lights on for her and treat her like a princess. So, every fire, I don't know if I want another fire station because that's just going to be another option for her to stop by and see one of those guys. But the benefit of going to stop by those fire stations and her asking is we get to see those conditions. We get to see those walls falling down and they're, they're always so gracious with their time when we catch them there. So, my biggest question, Chief Kiplinger, is, you know, right now, we're facing a staffing shortage in a lot of different industries. We talked, Mr. Huckabee, you asked this question earlier. Can you explain or maybe elaborate a little bit more that if we do have some retirements, we do have maybe some transfers or retirements, whatever it may be, along with the conditions that we're facing, can you elaborate a little bit more on response times? Because in the grand scheme of things, and what I do every day, a minute is probably not that big a deal, but I don't know if I can hold my breath for that long. So, can you elaborate on the fire station side of it? How much longer, even 90 seconds or 60 seconds or whatever that may be, to the firefighters?
So, so when you're, when you run staffing the way we do, the key is to catch fires in the incipient phase, which means before they enter the real growth phase and before they get so big that you can't control them, obviously. So, so time is of the essence. I would, I will tell you though, that, that the more, the more real, the more real data set that I think is important is that when you call 911 because you're having a stroke or a heart attack, 90% of the time, the fire engine with firefighter, EMTs, and paramedics is going to be the first one there. And so, when we talk about that, I, I'll never, I'll never sit here and say, we're not going to, we're not going to come, we're not going to do, we're not going to do our best, because that's what we do every day. But if you want us to be the most effective and efficient that we can possibly be when we get there, then having three people across as a bare minimum on a fire engine is really necessary. Obviously, time is important. There's also a limit to how much money the city can afford and we have to be realistic and we have to understand that. The fire department's been asking for additional people since 1989 that I know of. I assume that they asked in 84. I know all the way back to 1989. Now, I was in my second year of college in 1989, so I wasn't, I was just arriving here, actually. But, but the number of people on the truck is just as important as how quickly they get there, because when they get there, you need them to be able to actually do something. And does that answer your question, Mr. Beavers? Thank you.
It seems like I've been at this mic before. I'm Sammy Smith. I am an old academic, accounting, a little economics and finance thrown in. I did it for 42 years and I'm still a professor emeritus, so add all those years up, about 60 or so. I need to clear something up because number one, I'm not here pro, for, against any of these proposals. What I'm, what to speak a little bit about is the manner of the financing. And what I need to clear up before we get started, I know what a revenue bond is, I know what a sinking fund bond is, I know what a general obligation fund is, bond is, but I don't know what a CO bond is. Now, I've read the statute on CO bonds, it was, or CO certificates of obligation, which are not referred to as bonds, and I've seen it already referred to three or four times, I'm sure not as bonds. They're not bonds, they're certificates of obligation. There is a big difference between a bond from a municipality and a certificate of obligation. And the big difference is if you issue a bond issue, you have to allow the citizens to vote on the funding. The legislature in their great wisdom, I guess, in 1971 passed a statute setting up certificates of obligation, which were to be used in emergency situations so that cities or other local municipalities, entities, government units, counties, for example, if they had an emergency need of funds, they could issue what's called a certificate of obligation without allowing or having to go to the citizens for a vote. What's happening in this proposal that I've seen for the $20 million is a certificate of obligation, which requires no vote by the citizens at all. My point is I would like to encourage you to not issue a certificate of obligation, but to issue a bond issue and put it to the vote of the citizens. Now, what I heard here tonight, it seemed, it sounded like it would pass. Now, I've cleared up the little bit of confusion, I think, and maybe our council or our city manager could tell me why we should refer to these as bonds. They're not bonds. They're certificates of obligation.
As soon as you finish, we'll get Mr. Kirk to speak to that.
Okay. I think it's a somatic problem. Hey, it's a long-term debt and it's issued by the city, so let's call it a bond, but it's not a bond. And the big difference is, is whether, who approved it. Either five of our council approved it or the citizens approved it. Which do you want to do? Now, just to give you a couple of reasons, the one I've already mentioned, the intent of the legislature, the intent of the legislature was not to create a situation where anytime a city wanted to, they can just go out and float a certificate of obligation. That was not the intent of the legislation. And they, the subsequent legislatures have cut it back a little bit on what you can do with that. That's one, another reason is precedent. You do certificates of obligation, all of a sudden, for city managers and the city council, it's like almost free money. We don't have to do anything. We can just sign off on it and issue certificates of obligation. What's going to happen in the future? Hey, we do it now? Hey, we can do it later. And I've heard a sort of a rumor going around that, hey, we've done COs before here. I'm talking about the city of Nacogdoches. Well, I've read the last year's annual report by the Patillo CPA firm and it's got a list of bonds. Nowhere does it mention any COs. So, I don't know whether we have any COs or not. They're not in the annual financial report. Somebody signed off on the annual financial report on the list of bonds and they're in there. I got a copy of them right here. No COs. Need for funds? Do we have an emergency need for $20 million? I don't think so. Reason is, we've got 85, according to last year's annual financial report, we had $85 million in cash and liquid investments in the city. $85 million just sitting there earning interest. In the fiscal year ended last year, September 30, the enterprise funds, which is water, sewer, and sanitation primarily, generated $16 million in free cash flow. That's like, hey, we got 16 million more in cash than what it costs us to run those funds. The enterprise funds, the same funds, again, last September, had $55 million in cash and liquid assets on hand. I have a quote from the annual report. This is a quote, again, in the certified by CPA firm annual report. Business-type activities, and they're referring to enterprise funds, increased the city's net position by $5,203,070. That's okay, but here's the purpose. The increase is primarily due to water, sewer, and sanitation rate revenue, raising consistently more revenue than is needed to cover regular operating cost, management plans, that's you guys, to accumulate these average, these overages to fund future capital projects without the need to issue debt. One more little comment. I'm not sure the citizens are aware of this, but if you float this $20 million certificate of obligation, principal and interest, that's a cost of about $1,200 for every man, woman, and child that's a resident of the city of Nacogdoches. 20 million bucks for principal, knock on another probably 20 million for interest. My opinion, CO, the CO is a bad deal. What I would really like to see you guys do, when you want to do long-term financing, do it with a bond issue. Put it to the vote of these people sitting here. Thank you, guys.
Authorized purposes for COs or the public...
Authorized purposes for COs are the public infrastructure and in public works that are being presented to you today in this list of projects. It's one of the, there's a list of items, it's clearly one of the ones that's authorized. Certificate of Obligations are, in fact, a type of bond, and the bond markets, financial markets treat them the same way as they do any other bond, and they have the same process of going through an attorney general review and the financial markets go through a rather strict review process of all bonding indebtedness that they purchase from municipalities, and this, this would go through that same process. So it is a type of bond, and it is, the projects here are squarely within the purposes that you may issue them for that. The emergencies that he's referring to are a type of purpose that you can issue bonded indebtedness for through COs that are not subject to the challenge under the petition process. So the emergencies are treated specially, but that's only in that they are exempt from the challenge process.
Thank you.
I'm Mary McLaren. I know some of you and I know you know who I am at this point. I'm worried about the economy, aren't you? I think everyone is. Every time we go to the grocery store, every time we go fill up with gas, we see the prices going up, up, up. They're predicted to go up even higher after the midterms. Some economists say that the actual inflation rate now is 17%. According to Bloomberg, about 1 in 6 American homes, or 20 million US homes, are behind on their power bill. US strategic petroleum reserves have fallen to a 35-year low. This generated inflation is destroying the finances of the middle and lower classes. The rot is growing like a cancer on our country. When you add up the debt of the federal government, the state governments and the local municipalities, each citizen, not just each taxpayer, but each citizen owes $254,000-plus dollars. Now, that's a quarter of a million dollars we all owe right now. Unfunded liabilities of some Social Security, Medicare, et cetera, bring that total to $767,000-plus dollars. Now, that's for children, that's for retired people, not just working people. We all have that responsibility because of well-meaning politicians, very often well-meaning, good causes, sometimes not so good causes, sometimes there's some cynicism in there. That's a whole lot of money. Think about your little children who are just starting kindergarten and they owe that kind of money. That's crazy. Someone's going to have to pay for it. It's not free money. You read the news, when you have an over-leveraged financial system, at some point, the result is going to be bad. There's either going to be default or there's going to be hyperinflation. When a system like ours breaks, things can turn very ugly. Economists predict hard times ahead for the United States and globally. I'm sure you're all reading these things. Is this any time to take on more debt, even for worthy causes? Might there be other ways to fund some of these worthy causes? Households are reconsidering their spending. Maybe the city should too. It would be nice to have some of these projects. I think some of them are worthwhile. I'm not against some of this. I see that you, but given the times in which we lived, might it make more sense to, instead of the city council taking the responsibility for this very major decision, giving that decision to the people who will be paying for this debt? Thank you.
Justice.
Yes, please. There we go. Take hold. Yeah, I'm Philip Blackburn. I just had a few corrections, I guess, and a couple of questions, too. The ISO rating of two, how long is that good for?
Apologize. Generally speaking, the ISO reviews a city every 10 years. Our last review was in 2008, so we would expect another review sometime after 2028.
Okay. So we're not in danger of going to an ISO 3 like next month?
No.
Right, okay. And I'm not sure, I mean, I read this same report and I didn't get the same conclusion that you got on this report. It looks like this report is all about possibly taking us to an ISO 1, is that correct?
It's about maintaining a solid 2 and possibly going to a 1.
In other words, if we did all the things in this report, we would be in a position to be considered an ISO 1.
Potentially. So if you have above 90 points on the overall, on the, on the system, you're an ISO 1.
Right.
But nobody would recommend going to an ISO 1 if you had 91 points. So, so generally speaking, we want to have 87 or 88 points and stay solidly a 2. With regard to the vast majority of properties, an ISO 1 and 2 receive the same insurance break because they're done in couplets, with the exception of industry, they're allocated in couplets. So a 1 and 2 is the same, a 3 and 4 is the same.
So we don't have a danger of going to an ISO 3 for about another 10 years when we're reviewed again? And we have, if we do this project, this master fire station plan, then we could conceivably be an ISO 1, but that would cost us $20 million, okay? So, and there's no difference in the insurance rate from going from an ISO 2 to an ISO 1. I've already talked to my insurance agent, he said, "We don't break it down that fine." That if you're an ISO 2 or an ISO 1, you get the same premium. So I guess, and this has been presented, and I'll just, maybe I should talk to the audience here, too. This has been presented as I wanted this fire station pulled because I don't want anything for the Fire Department. That's totally wrong. The reason why I wanted the first item pulled is because this plan is not ready for primetime. And when you peel back the onion and start looking at it, it's not just the one fire station. To get this plan incorporated, to get us to an ISO 1, it's, that's just the first step. And so it's not going to cost you $8 million, which is really 12 million, because we're not paying cash for it. And if we do the whole plan here, which has been said to cost 20 to 30 million, that's not, or 20 million, it's really 30 to 40 million, counting interest. So, and it doesn't solve some of the other problems that I see. When I say it's not ready for primetime, I looked at the report, it's not comprehensive. This is the report. How could this be comprehensive for something that you're going to spend 30 to 40 million dollars on, it's just a few pages? There was no analysis of the impact that moving that fire station from downtown will have on the historic buildings downtown. And I've heard no comment from anyone about preserving the historic buildings. You know, we lost a historic building downtown in that 1984 fire, and that should be a wake-up call. Maybe people in here aren't old enough to remember that, maybe haven't lived here long enough. But Commercial Bank used to be half as wide as it is today. And between Clarity's Law Office and the Commercial Bank, there was a building, a historic building there. It's no longer there, we lost that in the fire. So protecting the historic buildings downtown, to me, is a very important part of this equation. And this report here, there was no analysis of that. No analysis of how many of those buildings down there have a sprinkler system. He didn't look at that. What are those buildings constructed from? They're constructed from hardwood pine, which is also known as kindling wood. And when one of those things catches on fire, it is a major problem. And the reason why the fire station is where it is today downtown is because of the 1984 fire. They were talking about moving that station back before 1984. I mean, they've been talking about moving that station for a long time. There was no station on Eriean Hill, that's up West Main. And so after the 1984 fire, there was no whisper of moving that station because they wanted to preserve the historic buildings. And now, after, you know, 50 years, everyone's forgotten about that, but I haven't forgotten about that. I remember the 1984 fire. And so I don't think this plan is comprehensive, and I think there's other things that could be done that will accomplish the same goals. I want to fix those fire stations, I want to fix them tomorrow. I want to say.
We can't do that.
You know, there's, I'll just mention one thing. If you're going to combine two stations for the manpower, combine the one on the hill with the one downtown. Leave the one downtown, gut that thing, spend $5 million, whatever it takes. Make it something that we're all proud of. That solves both the problems of the staffing and that fire station remaining downtown to preserve the historic buildings. That's never even been mentioned. And what I'm saying is, pull this line off so that we can analyze this carefully. I want to fix all the fire stations. So let's do that on the fast track. I'm not talking about putting it on the back burner. We want to do that as soon as possible. But this thing here is a dog. And I'm not talking about a pretty Dalmatian dog, this is a dog. We need to do something different.
I want to make sure that we don't identify that particular study as a dog. It was a very limited scope, it didn't include a lot of the things you're talking about. We looked at how do we, in a cost-effective manner, maintain our ISO rating over the long term and increase staffing as a minimum to 3? And is there a way to do that? And so we asked the consultant to come in and take a look and analyze the ISO and the way they rate us, and what would be the effect of going from fire stations to 4? Those other things weren't looked at. And I take, I take, I will say that we're not proposing to move a fire station out of downtown. We're proposing moving a fire station from dead in the middle of downtown to the edge of downtown, which is, which is a very dramatically different thing. And so, does that...
Sorry, I was way in the back. I had a question, I wanted to revisit about the tax rate increase that was proposed. I want to make sure I heard it right. It was currently, when the debt expires, it'll be .07 cents?
So the current tax debt tax rate is 8.2 cents. Under this CO, it will actually go down to 7.7 cents. That's the debt rate. So you will actually see a decrease in the debt rate from 8.2 to 7.7 with the proposed, the proposal that you had before you. Yes, yes.
So it's, that's about the same tax?
About the same tax. So that was my first question. And then I just wanted to say that my husband and I live in Pinecrest neighborhood, we're taxpayers, we're middle-class, and we are more than happy for our taxes to even increase to fund this project. So, thank you.
So, look what they've done to us. Because I, I looked up a while ago at all the faces of the firefighters who've pulled my butt out of several situations here, and every time I thanked them, I think they put tinted windows on the trucks because they got tired of waving at me. I admire you guys, I don't think there's a person here that doesn't want to help you, that doesn't want... I mean, have you ever pulled anybody out of a car and they said, usually they say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you so much," if you've saved their child? But something has happened, and I've been looking at it for two years now and I couldn't put my finger on it, because, yes, okay, build new fire stations and help you guys. I agree with that 100%, but where was that two years ago when they were trying to redo City Hall? Where was that two years ago when they spent $450,000 on some comprehensive plan that we don't understand? Where was that money not going to you? Somebody has come in and divided us. And maybe they were hired to do that. Maybe they were told, "Let's rip the Band-Aid off." That's what I've heard several times. Well, they've done it. They've caused a rift in this community. People that care about you a lot put a petition up, I believe, because they felt without a voice, and nobody wants to be without a voice. If they had put this $8 million up on day one, two years ago, everybody in this town would vote for it. But when they come to you and they say, "We need 40 million extra dollars or 200 million dollars, 175 million dollars," but they're afraid to put it to a vote, to the people of 32,000 people in this town, 17,000 of them vote, what does that say? It divides us. You guys look at us as enemies, and Fire Department, firemen and firewomen are the most, they're the ones that run into a building that's burning, they don't run out of it. You guys are transcendent. You run and help people when our instincts are to save our own lives. We need you, but what we don't need to be is divided, as a small town, by big-city ideas and billions and millions of dollars of debt. If you're going to do that to us, let the, there's probably 150 people here tonight, let these people vote on it. And don't let them divide us. We do not want to be your enemy. I do not. I love Nacogdoches. I don't understand what's happened, but I do understand that we are divided and somebody is causing it. It's either maybe some city council, maybe it's the members of the city council, maybe it's your new city manager, maybe it's the national period of going, whatever we're going through right now. But Nacogdoches is different. It's special. It's 300 years old, and you shouldn't be letting people rule your emotions by telling us that, "Well, it'll be five more minutes of your little girl having to hold her breath." Nobody wants that. If it was just two of us talking here, you guys don't want that. I don't want that. But what you're doing is you're being manipulated. You're being manipulated into hating each other, and it's got to stop.
I'm Nicola Van Zik, I live in the Northeast Ward. I also have credentials in business administration, I have a master's degree. I have some certifications with the State of Texas, Certified Texas Contract Developer, Certified Texas Contract Manager, and I'm also a Certified Procurement Officer with the UPPCC, I think. So basically, all that to say, I'm very familiar with how money is spent in the city and how we go about it. I've also done some research, specifically, Nacogdoches County in 2006 did issue a certificate of obligation for over $1 million, 1.195, and that matures in 2026, and I'm very nervous and passionate about this. Specifically, I know a lot of people are spouting that this is an emergency use, but I went to the comptroller's website, and that's the place where everybody in the state government goes to follow the rules of the State of Texas, to make sure we're abiding by everything. This comptroller states that a reason for a certificate of obligation is that local governments often use these to refinance or reduce interest rates on existing debt, enjoying substantial savings. And I believe that we should use this to continue substantial savings in our community and utilize what the State of Texas has offered us. Also, several other counties also utilize this. They use COs to fund many things. Anderson County, Maverick County, San Patricio County, or many of the other counties that utilize certificate of obligations to fund things in their city so that, you know, if you go shopping or you wonder why this city has this and this city has that, well, it's because they utilize what the State of Texas has given them, and I believe we should do that as well.
It's just going to be short and sweet here, but the last several speakers have talked about emergencies, you know? Our guys and possibly their families are going to come on down with prostate cancer. And if that's not an emergency, what is? I mean, whether it's this week, next month, a year from now. I'm a prostate survivor. God bless you guys.
I just wanted to address a few things. The 1984 fire, part of the reason that block burned is because another fire across town started because of that fire. So we had two major fires in the city at the same time with the minimal manning that they had at that time. So I just wanted to clear that up. That's part of the reason. It wouldn't have mattered if there was five stations around that block. It would have burned because they had two major fires that week.
At least you saved the whole block, though. You lost one building, but you saved the whole block.
Hey, it is, it is. It is what it is, but the fire codes were different in '84 than they are now. We're the only business around that works our whole career to put ourselves out of business.
What I meant is that we need a fire station downtown.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you talk that way? All right.
I'll just talk to that.
Okay, I'll talk of that. And in that length of time, I've paid my share of taxes and I've signed lots of paychecks. So, I deserve and I intend to get respect. I think any citizen, even in dissent, should have your respect. In your position, sir, it's expected, and I don't want you to talk and roll your eyes when I leave. Thank you. That did hurt when I left the meeting. What I want to say is what I have in common with the firemen is I have an old building downtown. I can't understand why you let it get in such a state of disrepair. I don't have the taxpayer advantage money, and I've kept mine up little at a time. That's what it takes. You can't just sit there and wait for it to fall in on you. You've got to work as you go and fix it. Am I short? Okay. Nobody, nobody loves the fire department more than I do. I called them every 30 minutes when I first got downtown. Every time a ball of smoke or every time a fire alarm went off, and you came. That truck got there in 60 seconds. Men came out everywhere. I couldn't have asked for better service. I was proud of what they worked to make. But I'm, I'm, I have restored six buildings in my town. I look like I'm kind of old when I am, but I'm proud of every one of them. I bought a house from Memorial Hospital. I restored it and took it out in three pieces with no roof, lived in it 45 years. I wouldn't trade it for any of your houses in town. The next thing I did was I went back over there and I got the ambulance, where they stored the ambulance motors. It was a garage with three walls and a pull-up door. So, I bought that and I made the best guest house in town out of it. Nobody's gotten any better. After that, I took my home that I grew up in by the Episcopal Church and with help from John Mass, I bought that, and I moved it out to some acreage by my daughter, who has since passed away from cancer. And I could be the poster child for cancer. Everybody in my family's gone, and they were all gone. But anyway, we did that house. It's a showplace, baseball field, fishing pond, whatever you want. I did everything within my budget. I didn't spend more than I had, and they're all debt-free. They've been debt-free for years. The only way to sleep at night is to be debt-free. You don't want to charge the car to the max and wait until you pay $10 and then charge that $10. That's not winning. Then I took, down the hill, there was what you'd call a tractor shed. It has a tuba floor and a leaning metal roof. That's what you put the tractors under. Made the best house in town you've ever seen in town. All these things are rental property. There's a girl in Laurel, Mississippi that makes ugly stuff. It makes pretty stuff. The only difference is her and me, she's younger, but I got the head start. I did things like that way before she thought about it. I'm saying, if you can save three or four million, I know that might be pocket change to this group, but if you can save three or four million by remodeling the One Downtown, that just seems logical to me. Everybody loves the One Downtown. Bob Murphy would not want it moved, and he's legendary to hear about that. And did you ever know who Big Bird was? The fire truck that was so trusty that when the bells went off, they'd have to push the truck, fire truck out in the street, roll her down the hill, and get her to crank, then they turn her around and go to the fire. He had story after story after story like that. There was nobody like him, and I loved that part of the history. Now, this, this really does relate, trust me. My claim to fame, everybody has a claim to fame. My claim to fame are boys that are really good in baseball. I have one that started out there at the park at Ford. He's in the Major League Baseball team. He's not just in Major League. He's one of the best ones they got. I'm kind of proud of him. But his, his and his brother, who's following in his footsteps, they grew up downtown. Their turf was the brick street. They went to Pop's Candy Shop, got candy. They went to Larry Cherry Laramie's, they got ice cream. They went to Yoncruz and ate lunch because that was their turf. And so, when vessels were down there, they felt like they were being invaded. But they loved downtown. And if you called Grayson right now on the East Coast and asked him what his favorite thing was about growing up downtown, he'd tell you, "Going to the fire department." When we got there, and I tried to make a lot of time, we didn't eat lunch, when we would go down there, these big, huge men, and they, he would look up like they were giants. He loved that. They were his heroes. They never felt, pick him up, he's 6'5" now, he wouldn't have to look up. They'd pick him up, put him in that big truck, put him in that big seat, and then he'd hold on to that huge steering wheel. Have you ever seen a kid with his eyes bugged out about a foot and ear-to-ear grin? If you hadn't seen that, you've missed a lot. He loved the fire department, and I do too. I want to see it stay in town. I have other business relatives that are down there. They want the sun. We just don't want to take it. There is nothing that I can't see restored. People bring me chairs that look like that microphone, and I can make something out of it. I don't, if I can save $1 million, doesn't that seem like a lot? What's wrong with remodeling? And I really would say whoever in all these years didn't keep up the repairs needs to be taken out of the shed, because you should have kept it up. If you let it get in that state of disrepair, you know, you can't fix it. Robert and I, on every nickel that ever happened down there, we were fixing it. I expect y'all to fix it a little at a time rather than saying, "Catastrophe, emergency, billion dollars, that's all we need." Don't do that to us now. I'll be in heaven when all these taxes hit. It ain't no matter if we don't pay taxes. But this generation, if you're saddling with this and that one after that and that one after that, you're going to be paying for this forever. And there are ways. If you, that $450,000 Colorado getaway would have taken, these committees that the Sentinel says that we formed, why didn't we give that $450,000 to those committees and let the money stay local? Didn't we want to send it out to California? Wherever heck it goes. I had one officer say to me, "We need to go, and we need to go all over the country." And I thought, "That's a good one." Then I thought, "Okay." They probably say, "Do they go get foreign countries all the time to come over here and do something?" With this, you can go to England. I've been there more than a dozen times. That town center and that fire department's downtown. And if it's Friday, Hamlet, or Billy, that fire department's going to be downtown. You can move it on University, but the little kids that come out of there are not going to run out on University Drive and play. They're going to come out of that and go to the CBD board and nothing down the shot. That's where they're going to go. I honestly think that if you go with this, people are going to want to incorporate their names in with those leaders that took our fortunes.
You can turn it any way you want it. Or pull it out.
Can y'all hear me? I'll be brief. My name is Richard Fisher. I own a building downtown, described as kindling, and I own a house or a shack on Logan's Porch Street near my friend Philip. I would be happy, even though it doesn't seem it's going to happen, to pay more taxes to fund this entire certificate of obligation. I think the needs of the fire department are obvious. They don't need to be belabored anymore. I also think that since we are just addressing the most needed things, we're spending that money intelligently. I believe, maybe I'll think, that the rest of the items that are going to be covered by the certificate of obligation are also very important. Now, how did we get here? Well, we got here because we haven't been doing it for years and years and years. Does that matter? No. We're in the situation we're in because of things that have happened before, and now we need to fix it. And I think we have to. I think we need to support the certificate of obligation, and if we have to pay more, we'll pay more. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brandy Clark. And I have, I'm in the Parks advocacy league. I've been going to city council meetings for seven, almost eight years now. And I just want to say, first of all, that our city manager has done an amazing job in the two years that he's been here. This month is his two-year anniversary, and wow, I'm so sorry that it's so intense. But he's done an amazing job. I have, like I said, been watching a lot, a lot. And there's, there's so much to say that I, my brain is like moving so fast, I'm not even sure which things to address first. The first one is that I'm all for remodeling too. I own a house from 1950 in, on Pecan Street, and remodeling is great. It is. It's really good. But it is more than remodeling. I have read 11 pages of the, the fire station plan. I went down yesterday and took a tour because I wanted to see the living conditions of our firefighters. I've talked to lots of people, and most of the people I've talked to are for it, even I had several message me, "I can't make it tonight," but I'm, you know, I'm for it. But $3 or $4 million difference does not include the firefighters that we need to man five stations. It doesn't include the fact that our station locations are not in the appropriate spaces. Everybody's worried about moving the downtown fire station, and I love the downtown fire station. I take my son there. I've been there multiple times to look at engines, and it is, it is really cool. But just because we moved the fire station from there doesn't mean that building's going to go away. People can do other things with that building. I mean, shoot, we could make a museum and a kids' space out of it after the remodeling happens. But they're just talking about moving the station to, like, around University and Main Street. That is not that far. I learned yesterday that the reason we have two stations was because in 1950, the truck from downtown could not get up the hill to go out to fires down that street, up that street. Like, that's not a consideration anymore, right? Man, so many other things. I think that, that the chief and the city staff have done an amazing job figuring out how Nacogdoches can afford this, because we are, we're not a huge town, but we have needs. We're growing. We've got, you know, people outside, just outside the city limits who need fire stations, and eventually, eventually we'll grow, and the location changes. If you look at the numbers, they're, they're not that much higher than a full remodel of old, old buildings, and I love old buildings. But I think that the technology that we have today to make our fire stations safe for our firefighters, that are the most efficient, that they will last for another 50 years. I would rather pay for these stations now while my son is young and not have him have to change all of this in 25, 40 years, because we didn't think about what is coming next. They didn't think about that in the, in 1980s. They said, "Oh, we'll build a station, but let's not man it." What are, what were they thinking? Well, we're, we're here now. We, we can't deal with what they were thinking. We have to do what we can do. And I am very confident in our city that they have looked at this and figured out that this is the best option for Nacogdoches, to do it at a level that we can afford, that we can build and change stations as it comes up and as we get the funds to do that. And hopefully, our town is growing, our taxpayers will grow, when our insurance stays low and when we have good services that people can look at and say, "Oh, this is where I want to live."
Thank you. Just a quick question. Milton Moore, I would like to see us keep our, our insurance rating of two, our ISO rating of two, as a goal. And Mr., would you say, Peaches, the man that did the report, he hasn't worked, he's a previous employee of ISO. He hasn't worked for them for 20 years, yet we're using his, his information as a roadmap. Keith, could you say, give me an idea of what you think about that? I mean, do you have?
Absolutely. He retired from ISO approximately 20 years ago. He was a civil engineer with them that rated fire departments and went in as an independent consultant as an engineering firm, working for municipalities and for emergency services districts, doing ISO reviews and guiding them through the process, and he's the preeminent expert in the state of Texas.
Do you think, though, that it, it's going, what we're doing is, even though he's not an employee of ISO, that ISO will agree with his viewpoint? That we're, that we're on the correct track, in other words?
ISO publishes their grading standards, and Mr. Peach, again, is the preeminent expert in the state of Texas with regard to those standards as they currently exist. In fact, my experience, we went through two ISO reviews. Mr. Peach helped guide us through the first review, and I can tell you that the ISO engineers knew less about the grading system than he did.
I'll do that. I'm David Schaffner. I live off of Gay Street, and I was in the 84 fire. So, it wasn't two fires. It was one at one time, took them about three or four minutes to get, get a block, but that's neither here nor there because it was kindling. The only thing that concerns me is what Brad says. I don't think anybody, you guys need a new fire station. All of y'all need to have the best equipment there is, and I don't think, I would love to pay more taxes to do that. What it is, is taking it out of the taxpayer's hands and giving it to somebody. You know, they're elected, but man, we're talking about a bunch of money, and we need to have something to say about it. I don't think if you would take this to the citizens of Nacogdoches, you would have probably 90% of them would vote for it. I know I would. So, let's do that. Instead of issuing these certificates of obligation, you know, we're taking it out of our hands and putting it into somebody's hands that we don't know what they're going to do. Okay? That's all.
Yes, sir. You're going to have to lift it up. Pull it, pull it out.
My name's Phil Maher, and I want to elaborate a little bit on what Dr. Smith and Brad had to say. Nobody is in disagreement about what we want to do with these funds. It's the process that has to be worried. If these bonds expire that we currently have in September, the tax rate goes down to a penny for debt. It's very important to the city that the citizens don't get to see that money back. They want you to pay that additional, so it doesn't look like we're going up and down. Certificate of obligation does that very quickly. A bond takes a long time. We go through the certificate of obligation. We're going to borrow that money, you're going to be taxed on it next year. A vast majority of that money is not going to be spent till '24, '25, '26, '27. It's going to sit in the bank, and you're going to pay money on interest and debt repayment until they get to those construction projects. I fully believe that the propaganda to the citizens of, "Your tax rate hasn't changed," isn't enough of a reason not to have a bond election. And do more if you want, but let the citizens decide. Thank you.
Mr. Barley, can you talk to the timeframe possibly of what, what it would take to, to spend these monies from this CO? I think you've told us that once before. I don't remember exactly what it was. Is that, is that a fair question? I'm putting you on the spot.
Are we on? Is it good? And Pam, you may have to help back me up. But CO monies would be available shortly after the first fiscal year in October, and we would be ready to roll forward immediately with, in the case of the fire station, with design, architectural design. So, that would put us on the ground immediately. If we went to open public election that people have been discussing, then it would be, most likely, a year from November before that election really came to fruition. At that point, the tax rate would still not be set for bond indebtedness, and unless we fronted money, then it would put us nearly two years behind before we began the process.
Okay. And I'm glad you mentioned that also, but also, the timeframe for...
So, uh, I think with also within a couple, three months, we could be on the ground doing, paving all the streets and all this.
And then we got, there's some water and some sewer items?
Not, not in the CO.
Okay.
Just strictly storm drain and storm sewer and, and.
So maybe two years to spend the funds?
Sure. I mean, we have three years to do it and we think we can adequately.
Okay. We have three.
It says 26, 27. I'm wrong. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. This is, Mr. Mahar, this is our CIP sheets that we use for a capital project. They're shown for each year's funding and, and, I mean, they don't, what, what's your question, Beyonce?
So, I, I think I can, I think I can answer that.
Your response was that, that we're ready to go on next couple of years, but your sheets on the CO.
So I, I really.
26, 27, 25, 26.
I, I can answer that. So, so those, those papers were done when staff was directed to start compiling this list, okay? Those are from the November situation when we brought this all forward. That was staff's original thing. Here's this project. We can suppose we'll try to do these this year, this year, this year. Once we got further into the process in, in December and in April, those papers were not, I'm sorry, those papers were not updated. I taught with my hands. Um, as far as, as the timing on it, we started the funding section and, and that's the part that has not been, has not been updated on those original documents.
The document is today though, so you haven't done anything since November.
Not, not on those particular documents. It's, it's, it's updated on the, on the spreadsheet, on the website, but it's not those original CIP documents. Those are internal documents that we were using to create this spreadsheet. So that, that was our, that was staff's first guess in each department of when to do it.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
No, we have to spend it in three years. Yeah.
Yeah, we just, we record it and we can't hear you if you don't.
Yeah. The, the COs require us to spend the money within three years.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel. Okay, back on the screen.
Hi, um, am I up, Mayor?
If, if you would like to be, you can't, you are.
Okay. I just have a couple of questions first. Um, I, I'm still confused about what the plan is here. And so I have the executive summary from that report and I'm on page five and I'm still confused about whether we're talking about four fire stations or ultimately five fire stations. And the reason is because, I'll just read it. This report will demonstrate an immediate need to relocate two fire stations, combine two fire stations, um, and Fire Station Four should remain. In the near future, a fifth fire station, assuming Fire Station Two and Fire Station Five will be combined, will be required on the west side of the city. So are we talking about ultimately five fire stations again or?
Absolutely. And, and so near future, uh, when we're talking about these facilities, uh, I think is 25 years. So if I-69 develops the way that we think it will and we develop the northwest corner of the city, it will require an additional fire station. But as far as in the near future, uh, that's not, that's not a necessity or request. I think that that's a 20, 25, 30 years down the road, uh, kind of number based on.
I think the, the report says in the near future, a fifth fire station, uh, will be required on the west side of the city. Is that, is that wrong or am I?
So, so if you read the balance of the report, when we reach 50% built out of the hydrogen areas or the developable areas in our community, um, that, that area requires a fire station with one, within one and a half miles of all the rooftops. And so, um, while, I think that while it says in the near future, the near future, if that northwest corner develops, uh, in the next five years, then it certainly would be the near future. But there's a, there's a vast expanse of land out there that's currently undeveloped and there are no plans that I'm aware of to develop that land.
Um, okay. That, I'm, I'm still a little, I'm still confused about five stations and four stations. I also haven't seen a, a specific budget, uh, for the fire sta- for the, the combined fire station. I don't know how much of this is expanded training facilities. I'm trying to, um, I, I certainly, and I think everybody, sorry, certainly would like our, our, um, our firefighters to be safe and healthy and not exposed to carcinogens, but is, how much of this is for like a training facility or? Uh, I, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm a little nervous going, uh, eight million dollars without a budget, really.
So, so our current facility that we operate in, the downtown fire station, is approximately 14,000 square feet. Uh, Fire Station Number Two is significantly smaller than that. Our proposal is for a 16,000 square foot facility. Uh, approximately 15, or 50% of that would be housing engines and equipment. And when we talk about a training facility, this would house a, a training room. Uh, we, we kind of, uh, in the programming, we, and again, we have not met with an architect, we have not met with an engineer. Um, we're just taking a look at, at the space that we need to combine those two facilities. And so we're talking about a 16,000 square foot building is what we proposed. But again, we haven't had any funding, we haven't spent any money trying to look at what does that actually look like.
So we may need six million, we may need 10 million, we may need, we're not, how do we know that this is the amount we need?
Well, Mr. Bartlet and I spent a great deal of time with pencils trying to, trying to calculate what the cost was gonna be, um, and looking at other projects in other communities, uh, and averaging out what those projects cost per square foot, uh, based on the very complicated design of a fire station, which is not, not like building a house or a warehouse or an automotive shop. It's a very different beast. Uh, and we believe that we're comfortable, uh, that that eight million dollars, which includes land acquisition and design, uh, will get us, uh, the facility that's necessary somewhere in the neighborhood of 16,000 square feet.
Um, I do want to make one additional comment and that's, one of the reasons to bring other people into the mix is because, um, I'm, I may be a city council member and I may, um, do my very, very best to represent everybody, but I would really rather see, um, um, people participating like Mr. Moore and, um, some of other people who do understand, who are engineers and, you know, I'd like a little more information on this. Um, let me ask you another one. What, what is the cost per square foot of this particular fire station that you're proposing?
We estimated $400 per square foot.
Um, is that a normal one or a normal cost or?
That, that's a very mid-range cost for a fire station. It's a, it's on the lower end.
Okay. And, um, I, I know in April, um, I had some reservations and I expressed them and was told at that time on April 6th, "Oh, no, no, this doesn't commit you." So I was surprised when I found myself committed a month ago. But one of my questions was about possible funding sources that are not from the city because we, again, we're a small city. We have a lot of needs. Um, I think, uh, you had mentioned that there are no other funding sources possible for fire stations?
I, I'm not a funding source expert, but we have scoured the federal and state grant programs that are available and we don't qualify, uh, for any that are currently out there.
So, um, one of my concerns was, I think with the July, was it 16th or 18th? I think it was the 16th meeting, um, we did talk about, um, having a contract for, um, uh, grant writing for CDBG funds and that's Community Development Block Grant Funds. And I know those have traditionally gone to fire stations. Um, uh, in fact, I think continuously, I did not look it up, but fire stations are a very, very common, um, a very common, um, recipient of CDBG dollars. Um, and I also, in that time, um, asked, uh, scoured some other fire stations and there are some that have received, um, donations from, uh, granteers, funders, foundations, particularly as matching dollars. So, um, I'm wondering if we fund this at eight million and yet there are sources of other funding, it's my understanding we have to spend the eight million before we actually, I mean, we, we're, these other dollars, sources of dollars are precluded? Help me out here, please.
Ms. Bellinger, um, so there, there's a couple of things. On the CDBG grant that you spoke of, we, we are under contract with Grant Works. They are looking to, um, apply for the grant and it can be used for fire facilities. The amount of the grant is 500,000. Um, and so there, there, there is not a, a capability for us to build this fire station with a CDBG, CDBG grant. Now, if we are awarded that grant, we can use that 500,000 in that capacity if, if city council so chooses. The, the difference between the CO and a GO bond is with the CO, you set a, an amount that you're gonna issue. So let's say we're gonna issue 20 million dollars and we say we're gonna issue, we're gonna do four projects. You do not quantify how much is going to be spent in each project. So we do not have to say eight million for the fire station. So if we get a grant for 500,000, we only have to spend seven and a half million of the grant, I mean, of the CO money. That other 500,000 can be used in one of the other, um, the other categories, parks, drainage or streets. As long as we spend the entire amount of the CO, it does not matter which category we spend it in. So if we do, get a grant for, for streets, same thing happens. That money can be reutilized to one of the other projects.
Thanks. That's very, very helpful to me. Um, I was also looking at the, um, looking at the NFPA, um, um, to see the cost per square foot and I think, I, I think the costs are, range from 275 dollars to 400 dollars per square foot. So 400 dollars seems to be the, the top amount. So that has me a little bit concerned.
Ms. Bellinger, I can assure you that that's not, that's not, does not reflect.
Not current.
Your prices.
That's not, okay. It may not be current. You know, I'm just, and Google is often not accurate, so, but I just thought I'd, I'd ask that. Um, so I have, I have a few other, um, thoughts, just thoughts and questions, but, um, I appreciate if you just come back to me a little bit.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Bolden, anything else?
Just, just a final thought on, uh, and it's just my thought, my opinion. And there was a period of time that the city, city council, uh, were more into maintaining a steady tax rate, but didn't give attention to the infrastructure that it need to and that it developed funding for it as it was needed. But now is the time to stop passing the baton to future city council and staff. It, it is, and I think the CO is, issuing the certificate is a good way to get the funding. I agree that it should be used for critical projects, but the listed projects that's on that CO is, in my opinion, is, uh, critical to the growth and safety and well-being of Nacogdoches. And not one of those projects can be forged, pushed off for another five, 10, 15 years.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hugby?
If I could, I'd like, I'd like to, to pass for a second.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
I, I just have a couple, um, or a question. Mr. Bartlet touched on it earlier. It's about the timeline if we were to put it to a vote. So this can be for either Mr. Bartlet or for, um, the city manager. But, um, I'm wondering what a realistic timeline looks like if it's put to, if the, the COs are put to the voters.
So, um, I spoke with our financial advisor and bond counsel this week concerning that very thing. And so, um, with the CO process, we would be selling these bonds, um, or the certificates in November, October, November timeframe of this year, which gives us the money immediately. We can kick off and start the process. If we go to the voters and assuming that we have to go November of '23, in it, whatever happens to pass, we will issue those bonds by the spring of '24. So you go from having access to the funds in November of '22 to spring of '24 is the difference.
Um, okay. And so then my follow-up question to that is, what does that difference in time mean to you, Chief Kiplinger?
You know, I, you know, I, I think with regard to the timing, um, with regard to the funding mechanism, uh, I, we'll work with whatever we need to work with, but our community needs a plan to move forward. We need a plan to move forward with fire facilities along with everything else. And we need a plan to move forward with having enough people in, across the, the city departments to effectively perform the work that you ask us to do every day. And so if you told me, um, the fire station, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna be funded and in 18 months, we're gonna kick it off, uh, that's, that's better than not kicking it off. Uh, if you asked me would I like to get started on this one and then in next November, put the other projects on, on the bond for the vote, that would absolutely be, uh, the best-case scenario for me. I, I do think we need to continue with the other projects. I believe that in my heart. Uh, and I also believe that, that the citizen should have an opportunity to speak on that. So, um, so I would, I would think that, um, that it's a both and, not an either or. We can move forward with, with this if, if the council is so inclined, um, but then follow it up because Mr. Bartlet and Mr. Bray and, and, and everybody across the city lines have, have all these other projects that we still need to consider and, and those are much bigger numbers that will include, include a tax increase. And I think if we're talking about doing a straight across tax increase, it's appropriate to go to the voters.
Thank you. And, um, a couple of the things that you said made me recall, um, a comment that Mr. Bartlet made, um, I want to say it was the July 19th council meeting and, and I don't remember the exact question, but it went somewhere along the lines of, um, if these COs, COs don't get issued, what'll happen in terms, in, we were speaking here in terms of not the fire station, but the things under your purview. And I remember you saying something like, "We are in a critical state with these tier one projects and so if these COs don't move forward, I'm gonna be coming to you, asking you for the money and where else it's gonna come from." So I just wanted, um, to ask if you could elaborate on that.
Correct. And that, that is what I said, especially in our drainage, uh, projects. We've got, the reason we move forward with design is because they were critical, whether they were funded this way or through some other mechanism. So we have failing bridges, we have culverts that are falling apart, we have things that, uh, I can't wait two years or a year and a half to implement. So yes, we will come to you for a capital projects need, which will come somewhere out of reserve funds and, and, and I will come and make that ask. Streets are probably a little bit fuzzier because we can drive through potholes longer than we can when a bridge collapses, but, uh, the streets are deteriorating. We spend about a million one a year on streets. We need to be spending two and a half million a year just to break even on streets, not even to get ahead. So again, we're deferring maintenance, we're kicking the can. So the, the same applies to the streets.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. One of you, Councilmember Bellinger, are you ready?
Well, I have a couple more questions here.
Right.
Um, I have, uh, you know, I believe in collaborative decision-making. I, I am firm believer that decisions made together are better. Um, so decisions made with citizens involved, along with, um, staff, um, along with different viewpoints, I think they, uh, there's a lot of evidence about that, by the way. They're just better decisions. It doesn't mean somebody's not a profession.
Okay, one of you, Councilmember Bellinger, are you ready?
Well, I have a couple more questions here. I have, you know, I believe in collaborative decision-making. I am firm believer that decisions made together are better. So decisions made with citizens involved, along with staff, along with different viewpoints, I think they, there's a lot of evidence about that, by the way. They're just better decisions. It doesn't mean somebody's not a professional, or that we don't trust our staff or anything like that. It's just collaborative decision-making is better. So I'm wondering if there's a possibility, especially since we can move dollars around between these categories, if we don't spend them. If we could set up, at this point, a task force that involves some of these people who are so concerned, who are very, very smart people, to look at alternatives, possibly to see if there are other ways to keep the fire station downtown, renovate, just another look at it. And also to help examine, I still can't get those, I multiply 300 dollars per square foot times 16,000, and I come up with just under 5 million. I multiply 400 dollars, and I come up with six and a half million. So I can't get these numbers straight. But anyway, if you have a task force that actually agrees and examines really in much more detail possibilities of whether we do need one fire station, two fire stations, I mean, how imminent the fifth fire station is. And then with the knowledge that, then if we can save some dollars, and also if we can find some naming opportunities or anything like that, not to delay it, I'm just saying, set the task force up to be working on this with the knowledge that, and have a budget, then later come back to council for approval, a very specific budget. Go ahead and fund the COs with the knowledge that if it doesn't go to the, if we don't spend all 8 million dollars on this fire station thing, it can go to our drainage and streets. Because I know we have significant dollars. I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can have a little bit more information about this going forward, we can capitalize on the talent we have in our community, we can immediately get our firefighters out of danger, keep them safe and secure, not exposed to carcinogens, but still have a little bit more community involvement. And even just moving the fire station from downtown. There is some value in just looking at, what's our downtown going to look like without it? And thinking that through. So anyway, that's what my suggestion is. We go ahead and have a task force to collaboratively look at it. I don't want to repeat myself, but anyway, that's what I think might help the situation.
Okay. Mr. Hugley?
Make sure I get my notes so I don't miss any of the things that I think are important. The first thing is to our firefighters and our public, I think the council hears you loud and clear tonight that we have concerns both about our firefighter's safety and about the funding mechanism and the way we do things. We're discussing capital improvements tonight because we have significant, serious capital improvement needs. And we're only talking about a small piece of what we've identified. My position on public input has not changed. It's the same tonight as it was when I ran for this office. It's the same as it was on July 19. Nothing's changed. But I want to be clear about something. We have challenges ahead of us, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to face those together. And one of the things that, this is going to be one of the hardest meetings probably that I ever attend. And it probably is for everyone in this room. When we all stood up and said the pledge of allegiance, we did that in unison. We were together. But ever since that second, there's been division in this room. That's not in my notes. My biggest concern is that we've approached this whole process in a way that doesn't build trust with our residents, and it falls on all of us, falls on the council, the staff. The result is that the council, on the 19th of July, did not have consensus on how we wanted to move forward. There's a petition circulating around our city, and we have people here that have obviously very strong opinions on everything that's going on. I promised you, our entire city, my colleagues, our staff, that I would be transparent in everything that I did when I got in this office. And so I'm going to be very honest and open with you that I've spent hours and hours and hours over the last week to try and bring us together and find some common ground. I don't think anyone in this room is more supportive of our firefighters than I am. I look around and see people I've known for a long time and friends. But to help try and find a way forward, as Mr. Canizar has mentioned at the beginning, I proposed two different plans, but one involved removing the fire station from the CO issuance against what I think is best, because I wanted us to move forward on our projects. I spoke with Chief Kiplinger for a long, long time, and his willingness to even discuss it, I think, shows his integrity. We spent, I spent a lot of time with Philip Blackburn discussing these very same issues. And I'll tell you that he and I disagree on the fire station issue, but not on the public input side. I propose that staff make concessions so that we could move forward. And I see now that we probably don't have the votes to have a resolution to this that removes the fire station. Ultimately, I think we're just too far apart on that specific issue. And I think that leaves this body with few options other than to move forward and have the people be able to bring a petition before the council and vote on it if you want to. I think we need to move forward with this plan. I have prayed over this, and I've struggled with it. I've talked to anybody that would listen to me, and I've listened to countless people. But the way we're doing things is not the best we can do, and it's not what our residents deserve. But in saying that, I have to support moving forward with the COs. Thank you.
And I guess I would make comments kind of at the end. You know, as I look at the items that need to be addressed in our community, I just really don't see anything that we can leave out. We've got to do these things, we've got to move forward. We've got a funding mechanism that includes many things, including the COs. You know, we can save interest by not issuing COs for two or three years, but what's inflation going to do to us? What's the rising cost of building and things? I'm building a house right now. I can tell you, it's not 200 dollars a foot for a fire station. I'll guarantee you, it's more in that 400 dollar range. Because a house is going to be almost to the 200 dollar range. But anyway, you know, I just, I think we've got to move forward. I think we've got to give adequate facilities to our fire. I think the parks are given, and I think certainly all the maintenance issues. We've got to do those things. So with that, I'd make a motion that we approve item 4A.
Mayor, I had a, I actually, my hand up to speak again?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve item 4A to consider approval of the resolution to proceed with issuance of certificates of obligation for the city of Nacogdoches for the funding of the construction, improving and equipping firefighting facilities, including acquisition of land. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Bellinger?
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion. I'd like you to take my, what I was suggesting, to hear it again. I'm delighted to do that, I'm delighted to move forward. But I would amend the motion to include a task force, to include two items. First of all, a task force that consists of community members along with staff to examine all kinds of alternatives for what we're doing. I'll put it in a motion in just a minute. But to examine alternatives, to examine cost efficiencies, and then also to have a specific budget submitted to us for approval for the fire station, either the single fire station or the renovation. I hope that covers it. I want the task force to be able to be free to suggest two fire stations or, you know, to look at other alternatives. So have I totally messed up how my motion is? Do I need to restate it?
Yes, ma'am, please do.
My amendment?
Yes, ma'am, you do need to restate it.
Okay. So I propose an amendment. I'd like to amend the motion to include a task force that examines all possibilities and cost-saving mechanisms. And that, before expenditures are made, that we have a very specific budget approved by council.
Okay, have a motion for amendment, is there a second?
I'll second the amendment.
Mechanically, talk to us about that. I don't know if it's the chief or Mr. Bartlet or Ms. Kerbo. How does that work?
Just to make sure, is the intent, Ms. Councilmember, just to clarify in my head. So is the intent to leave the monies in as stated, as shown, the 8 million rounding, the 8 million? The amendment is to, again, I heard it's a task force and look at alternatives, but that also could mean moving the station to its, we don't have a proposed location, but moving the station away from downtown or near downtown, is that correct?
It could include any alternatives. And yes, it would move this forward, it would include this in the bond, I mean, in the, sorry, certificate obligation. Yes, and it could include any alternatives. They would be free to examine things. And the impact on downtown, too. I mean, yeah, I just think it's a reasonable way to move forward together. And I just, I would like, all right, I know we have a motion, but I really wanted to say, we're a small city with limited resources, and we really have to work together.
So Mayor, I do need to make one clarification. The way that the project is listed in the resolution, and which would also be in the forthcoming ordinance, includes, as you read, the construction, blah, 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 including the acquisition of land. And that becomes very important because if that piece is there, we have to buy land for a fire facility with these funds, okay? And if we take it out, we cannot buy land. And so that becomes kind of a sticking point on that issue. And so if we come back and say we only want to renovate the two stations, we still have to buy the land because that's what we have proposed in the CO is the land acquisition piece. And so if our thought is we are going forward and not building a new facility, then we would have to take that land piece out. But converse to that, if we decide to build it and we take the land piece out, then we're going to have to buy the land out of reserves, out of cash, some other mechanism. We would not be able to utilize these funds to buy the land for the new station. And so that's a little bit of the kicker here. The land acquisition becomes very important in this piece of the resolution.
So my question is, is there a dollar amount on the land acquisition?
I believe, and was it?
I mean, do we have to stick to that dollar amount on the land acquisition? Because, I mean, I can see purchasing land downtown if we decide, just a little bit to store the new truck or something.
So the budget number was 800,000 for land acquisition in that project. I don't think the land acquisition is going to cost that, but I budgeted what we, with Mr. Bartlet and I had enough conversations to try to figure that out. And so there are other alternatives for land acquisition if you decided not to move forward with the central station project.
Right, if the task force, they could, we could spend just a very, very small amount on land acquisition. I would just like to keep it open.
So here's an alternative to that. If we leave the land acquisition piece in the CO resolution, we would have to buy land with the intent of building some sort of fire facility, whether that is this central fire station, one of the future fire stations, where it's the future fire training facility. We would have to buy the land with the intent of using it for a fire facility. That's kind of the kicker. That's where they're going to hold us to it. We can't just buy a piece of land and then not have an intention to actually use it for a fire facility in the future.
Okay, but they, there's, well, I don't think that precludes on having two, having two fire stations. There's, I hope it doesn't, but I'm willing to go for it, to see how that works.
So Chief or Mr. Bartlet, lacking this amendment for this task force, what process would you go through to design it? And, I mean, is there council input on that? Or is there, I mean, do you come back for things, for cost and budgets to be approved? How does that work?
Let me let Mr. Bartlet walk us through that.
So procuring professionals for the design phase of this would happen regardless of how we were financing. So the answer is yes, contracts for those professionals and for the design, and ultimately for construction would all come through council for approval. So if we have a task force, they would merely be more than just staff to review the documents as we go through the design phase of this. So I think, you know, it would still flow normally like we do. Council still approves every single contract, every single expenditure. That answer, please, Mayor?
Excellent.
So, I'm sorry. The point is, we just need a second look at this, and we need to have community engagement and involvement, even in answering some of these questions and analyzing it. I'm not saying a task force that later on approves it, but one that really is engaged in the process. We'll get a better.
And Pam's issue is noted, we'll have to consider that. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it is made absolutely clear to us what we're voting on when we're voting on it. So that there isn't any confusion. Because I'm already confused.
Your first vote would be whether to amend the resolution to add the two pieces that she's asked us to add.
The two pieces being a task force and?
Task force and specific budgets was what she requested.
So that's what we're voting on now?
Yes.
Okay, any other comments? Ready to vote? Those in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
So Mayor, now you go back to the original resolution.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve item 4A. Those in favor, signal saying aye?
Is there not room for discussion there? Were we immediately calling the question? I'm sorry, I was not quite ready for that. I think what Councilmember Bellinger was trying to do was to say that we heard the people, and we, it's not, our staff has said that it won't gum up the process. What is the harm? We did this in July, and we didn't get any public input beyond that, and now we're going to vote on it again. I just want to have that said, that why, we're just going down the same path again.
Thank you.
I call the question.
Those in favor of item 4A, there's a motion and a second to approve item 4A. Those in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move to 4B, consider approval of resolution to proceed with.
I think your, she voted on either one.
Councilmember, what was your vote?
I'm sorry. Are you talking to me?
Yes, ma'am.
I said I voted for it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, move to 4B. Consider approval of a resolution to proceed with the issuance of certificates of obligation for the city of Nacogdoches for the funding of construction, improving and equipping parks facilities. Anything to?
Mayor, there's really nothing to add. That presentation that I made earlier covers everything unless you have questions about the projects themselves, and Mr. Bray is here to answer those.
You want to hear from public comment, or do you have questions? If you've got questions, I think that's probably appropriate, but if it's just comment, yeah. Any public comment regarding the parks piece? Yes, ma'am.
The parks piece of the CO?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay. I am for the parks piece of the CO. So I've been coming to city council for a long time, and we are very excited to see this. If anybody has had a childhood park, it is definitely a much-needed emergency to have bathrooms at the park and to have neighborhoods that have parks in them, that have functional equipment. And so I just, I'm very excited about the parks piece.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, council comments? Ms. Huckabee?
I do just have a couple of questions for Mr. Bray regarding the park restrooms. Can you give us just, you're behind me, I'm sorry. Can you give us a brief rundown on what the, what you're thinking on park restrooms? I know we have a list of where they're going, but how will they compare to what is currently at our parks?
So, Mr. Huckabee, the current restrooms that we have that are functional, because about half of them are closed because they've been broken over the years from just overuse and underdesign. Most of those were built in the 70s and 80s, and so we, in our plan for the ones that are currently funded, that are outside of the CO issuance, and the ones that are listed for the CO issuance, would be a modern design that is easy to clean. There's things like vandal-proof paint that you can apply to things. Now, it doesn't mean it's actually vandal-proof, but it's vandal-resistant. So what we did in looking at design of the area was something that is easily cleaned and maintained so that they can be around for years to come.
I know some of the concerns that I've heard from the community are related to these issues. Can you speak for a second about how we will keep them safe? Will we be able to keep them locked on when parks are not being used, like at night? Will that be an opportunity for us?
That is always a feature that you can put into a park restroom. For instance, the restroom that's at the SFA, Intermural Fields and Soccer Fields, those are open when there is use down there, and they close them in the evening. The soccer, I mean, the restrooms that we have at our collective society complex are the same way. So that is always an option that you can have in our restrooms. But also, our police department does an excellent job of enforcing no use of the parks in the evening. Because several months ago, city council passed an ordinance that outlawed camping. And so when police department is traveling through our parks and they see people there in the evening, they're not supposed to be there. So there's less of a need to have them closed in the evening now than there was just a year, two years ago.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Bellinger, I can't see you right now. Any comments?
None, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
You're not missing anything, not being able to see me.
Mr. Bolden?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Do I have a motion on 4B?
So I move that we approve item 4B as written.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, have a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I'll go slower. Thank you. Okay, moving to 4C. Consider approval of a resolution to proceed with the issuance of certificates of obligation for the city of Nacogdoches for the funding of constructing, improving, and renovating streets, alleys, culverts, and bridges, including drainage and erosion control, landscaping, walls, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, lighting, signage, and traffic signalization incidental thereto, and acquisition of land and rights of way reconstruction projects thereof. Mr. Waynes, can you keep that crew back there kind of quiet? Counsel, any questions about that? Okay. Any public comment on that? Okay, any council comment regarding that item?
I did have a question. I just didn't jump in fast enough. Mr. Bartlett, can you just give us, I know I'm asking for this over and over from every time we get to this, but can you give us a brief overview of what would be included in these projects?
Sure, and the street?
We're on, are we on drain?
We're on C.
Yeah.
So we have finished our once every five-year citywide evaluation of all the streets, and we have taken the worst streets. We score them basically one through five. These are the three, four, and five streets. So this is enough funds, we feel like are very close to enough funds, to bring all the three, four, and five streets up to grade. It puts us more in kind of a maintenance mode and not a reconstruction mode. So I think this gets us to where we can use our money more efficiently in the future. So probably 60, 63 streets is on my list. We're hoping to get all of those stuck in a package.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, do I have a motion on items 4C?
I make the motion, we approve item 4C as presented.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bolden? Any discussion? Those in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move to D. Consider approval of a resolution to proceed with the issuance of certificates of obligation for the city of Nacogdoches for the funding of constructing and improving flood control and drainage facilities and improvements, including the acquisition of land and right-of-ways therefore. Any questions from council? I've moved too fast, go ahead.
I just wanted to say one thing. I'm so delighted to see these drainage projects move forward. These are good examples to me of very concrete, specific projects that desperately need funding. So, thanks. And thanks for doing such a good job, Mr. Bartlett, of making it very, very clear. Thanks.
Mr. Bartlett, different item, same question. Can you give us a brief overview of it?
Sure. These are, I think the list is non-ending, but we picked what we think are some of the worst or some critical. In some cases, they're going to affect roadway crossings, bridges, things like that. But these are items that we've had repeated complaints about, repeated flooding, property damage from. So I won't say there aren't other high-priority projects, but this will give us. The list, as you see, exceeds the dollars that we're talking about in the CO, so we will work to prioritize some of those. The left side have been designed, we have engineered plans stamped and sealed and ready to go to bids, except for Summer Hill subdivision. We're finalizing that right now with an engineer. And so we can hit the ground very quickly and solve some of our major problems, and then we'll work for the following year to try to get the others designed. I think they're all very critical to just mobility in our city.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Bartlett, I was trying to find a note that I couldn't, but I wrote something about land acquisition, and I think it was Lanana Creek on drainage, on, was it sewage?
That would be for the sewer project later on, Councilman, yes.
And we need to acquire land?
Well, not as part of this CO package. So ultimately, when we look at the Benita Creek and Lanana Creek sewer replacement project, it will require easements.
Okay.
There is language in the CO to allow us to do acquisition of easements, and the reason for that is sometimes we find that we have improvements, quite honestly, just outside the right-of-way when they built them in an inland, and we want to be able to get an easement to maintain those culvert crossings you go over. So occasionally, we have very small easements that we'll want to purchase as part of a repair project, and that's the reason that language is in this CO.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay?
I'll make the motion to approve item 4D as written.
Okay, great.
Go for it.
I'll second.
All right, second. Ms. Fisher? Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move to E. Consider approval of a resolution to proceed with the issuance of certificates of obligation for the city of Nacogdoches for the total funding of infrastructure projects in an amount not to exceed $21,001,000. Ms. Carbo, any comments?
No, sir. I just would like to clarify that once we do get to the part where we're bringing forward the ordinance to authorize the issuance, that is the date that you will have a final total amount. So right now, what we're asking is not to exceed the 21,000. If what we've proposed is the 1980 or 80, there is issuance cost, so we will get those estimates, those will be added to it. You can add to these projects. So those drainage projects totaled 6.1. If you wanted to fund more of those, you have between now and the time that we do the ordinance to say we're going to issue $20,200,000 or $20,500,000, as long as you stay within the 21,000. And so that, tonight, is still just staying, that is the max that we can do, we can do lower than that.
So, and if rates were to get a little better?
Right, right.
We could have more.
Right, exactly.
And keep the same payment?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, any questions? Any public comment on that? Okay. Any council comments? Okay, do I have a motion on 4E?
I move that we approve item 4E as written.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Those in favor, signal saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll move to our final item, 4F. Hold a discussion and give staff direction regarding the proposed 2022, 2023 budget.
Mayor, my?
Is this going to be a long, a fairly long presentation?
I would say no, because there's been very few changes. That's what I was going to say. The last council meeting on the 16th, y'all directed me to add the step system for fire and police, and so that was added, and I sent that budget to y'all on the 17th. The only changes that have happened between the 17th edition of the budget and the one that is before you now, and Councilman Bellinger, I emailed yours, I hope you got it, there were three changes. And one was just a clarification, I'm sorry. Oh, that's okay. So one was just a clarification, just to make it a little more clear, in our use of reserves in the general fund, I have segregated out the capital equipment, special projects, and then, of course, our capital improvements program. So on page two and again on page seven, you will see where I have segregated the capital equipment from our special projects, and that's just to make it a little clearer on how we're proposing to use our reserve funds in the general fund. The second thing that changed is in the prior versions of the budget, I had had the first tranche of ARPA budgeted for '22, '23, and the second tranche in '23, '24. Knowing now that we are going to get all that money before next fiscal year, it makes sense to have it all in the same fiscal year. And so in order to stay true to what we had presented in the CIP, I moved that entire ARPA-funded items to the '22, '23 budget. Now, you will notice that it's not $8 million, it's 7.8. So there would be 5.8 in sewer and 2 million in water lines. The other additional 200,000 is the contract with Grant Works to administer the entire ARPA project. The third thing that changed on page eight and nine, which is your summary for the utility fund, in the past, if we have ended the, we estimate in the year with an excess reserve in the utility funds, normally what we have done in the past is to transfer a portion of that over to future CIP. This is how we have set aside monies in the utility fund to fund, cash fund some of these items. We did, we were not able to do that last year. We didn't have enough reserves the year before. I think we did like two and a half million. Couple of years ago, we did three. This year, I'm proposing that we move a million of the excess reserves over the 25% requirement in the utility fund to the future CIP. That still leaves us 33% over the reserve requirement. Now, if y'all choose not to do that, I can certainly remove that, but that is something that we have tried to do in the past, and that is a way we set aside money to cash fund some of these utility items. And other than that, there should be no changes within the budget as presented. Do I have any questions before I go to the calendar? Because there are some issues on the calendar I need to cover with you as well. No, no major changes, no operational changes whatsoever, just how we've reflected the reserve expenditures.
Anybody? Okay, let's move to the calendar. Is that in here?
Uh-huh. Next one. Oh, no, not.
Not in here?
No, no, no. Okay. So, tonight, with the prior votes, we will be proceeding with the COs. I spoke with our financial advisor and bond counsel, like I said earlier in the week. They have actually kind of slowed down the process because of the unknown factor with where we were going with this budget and with the potential with the petition, and so they are going to kick that back off. They did that because it's extremely expensive, and they did not want to start billing us billable hours if we were not going to proceed with this. So there is going to be a little bit of a delay in us bringing you that ordinance to authorize the COs. It's probably going to be about a two-week delay. So I will no longer be meeting with the rating agencies on September the 2nd. I'm hopeful that they will be able to schedule that the last of the, one of the last two weeks in September to keep us on track. The only caveat with that is on September the 20th, we still have to have an item on the agenda because it was set that way with the original, with the original issuance timeline. We will just need to delay that. And so it will be on the agenda, but with the caveat that it will need to be delayed until the October, the 11th or 18th meeting, and the financial advisors will advise us once we meet with the rating agencies, whether it will be October the 11th or October the 18th. It should only put us about two weeks in actually difference in selling, in selling the bond, or the certificates.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
All right, that concludes our agenda, and we're adjourned.